That was a lot of knocking, wasn't it? Good morning, good morning, good morning. And welcome to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. This is our regular meeting. It is November 2nd, and welcome to your boardroom. And I'd like to start with the roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zerkozak.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Foye.
Here.
And Supervisor Maug.
Here also, thank you. Okay, now, we're going to have a moment of inspiration, and it is really my pleasure to invite up to our podium Sue Hughes. All of us certainly know Sue and her many hats that she wears. She is our county's lead analyst, but she has been a volunteer. Today, she's wearing the hat with Camrio Hospice, where she's been a volunteer since February 2000, facilitating a weekly grief support group for teens and young adults. And this has certainly been an inspiration for both Sue and for the young adults and teens she works with. I've often heard that Sue says despite the sorrow that brought them together, they've managed to stay focused on their future and are sensitive to others and towards life, and they've learned the importance of never wasting a day. So she's going to share with us some information about the annual Camrio Hospice Tree of Life campaign, and no, it's not too early to be talking about this.
That's right.
It is right around the corner. So it's my pleasure to invite Sue for the moment of inspiration.
Thank you, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Nicole. You know, I can't start out this moment of inspiration without giving you a little bit of background and a story. And I believe that probably all of you sitting at the dais know this story, but maybe some of the folks that are watching don't know this story. And this is what drives me to be able to give a little moment of inspiration. In May of 1998, my son and only child was killed in a car accident. And, you know, that afternoon, knowing that happened, I thought, how am I going to breathe again? How am I going to walk through life without that precious person in my life? And someone I worked with at the time did everything he could to find a support group for me to attend. And the first time I walked into the group, well, let me back up. On the way to the group, I got lost. And I have a really good sense of direction, but I got lost, and I think it was more about I didn't really want to go. And I called my mom on my phone, and I said, "I'm not going to go. I can't find it. I don't know where it is, and I just don't really want to be here." Because it seemed like if I went, it made it all real. And my mom, because you're always your parent's child, said, "Please, just go one time." And I found the place, and I walked in, and it was the first time in seven weeks that I felt like someone knew what I was going through. There were two other moms in the group. It was a brand-new group, and it was for parents who had lost children. And I felt, for the first time, like I was at home that I could actually do this. And I discovered early on that I wanted to find a way to express my grief sort of in a solitary way, so I asked if I could participate in one-on-one counseling through Camrio Hospice. And I should note here that all of their services are free of charge, whether you're attending a bereavement support group or you're working as a caregiver for someone who's terminally ill, and you are the person who needs that service. All of the one-on-one counseling that I did for a little bit over a year was absolutely free of charge. But at that time, I had an opportunity to talk about my son, to say his name without making someone cringe and hope that I wouldn't tell a story about him. I had an opportunity to say what I was afraid of and what I hoped for. And for me, I learned that the best way to help yourself is to find a way to help someone else. So hospice, I always talked about Raymond and his friends and how they stayed in touch, and they said, "You know, we've never had a teen group, and we think you'd be perfect to facilitate the teen group. Would you be interested?" Well, I couldn't say yes fast enough, so I took their volunteer training, and in February of 2000 was the first time the group met. The first time, one boy showed up, and he was 16 years old, and his dad had died. The second week, a girl showed up, and for a long, long time, probably a year, it was just the three of us that met every single Thursday night in Camrio, at Camrio Hospice. But as time went on, and people heard about the group, and we were in high schools, the group grew, which is a nice thing, but a sad thing, because all of those kids are there because someone they love died. And for some of them, it's a parent; for some of them, it's both parents; for some, it's a brother, or a sister, or a friend. And it's from a variety of causes, whether it's a car accident, or cancer, or diabetes, or murder, and even suicide. We've had all of those in the group, and for the last 10 years, I would guess, because I didn't keep track of it, that well over 100 children have come, teens and young adults have come through this group. The things that they've learned, I believe, from each other is they've learned compassion; they've learned to stay focused on their futures; they've learned to be supportive of each other; they've learned that life is very short, and you should never waste a day; and they've learned that every Thursday night, they can come and tell a story about the person that they lost. They know that you might forget what someone says to you, but you never forget how someone made you feel. They're compassionate; they've learned to volunteer; and there isn't a Thursday night I drive away from there that I'm not extremely proud of what I'm able to do. So what I'd like to share with you is this begins Camrio Hospice's Tree of Life campaign. It is their largest fundraiser, because I must repeat again, all of their services are free. What they do is the first Saturday in December, there's a tree in Constitution Park in Camrio, and it's the only tree in the park during the holiday season that is lit with colored lights. All the other trees in the park have white lights on them. And the lights that are on that tree are to represent either someone who has died or in honor of someone. So every year, I buy a light in memory of Raymond, and I buy a light in honor of those teens that spend every Thursday night together with me and together with each other. So for me, this was and is, every Thursday night, my moment of inspiration. I have an opportunity to do something instead of staying in a really dark place and wishing my life were back to the way it was. I have an opportunity to make life a little bit better for someone else. So I've handed some of the handouts to Roberta, and I'll have some in my office. Sandy, sitting behind me, says she'll bring me a poster so I can hang it up and just remind everyone that their services are free. Thank you for letting me be the moment of inspiration. I very much appreciate it.
And thank you, Sue, so very much. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
It gives us great warmth and understanding of a season in front of us, but a service that you do that is outside your usual duties, that is just so rewarding for all who you touch, Sue. Yes?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I want to thank Sue for sharing her inner feelings. I know that's very emotional, because I lost my daughter too at a very young age, and you don't forget. But I want to thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And she died of an illness too at a very, very young age. So thank you for sharing.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sue. And now, I have on the agenda, we're going to segue right into the Camrio Hospice Tree of Life and recognize proclaiming November 2010 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. And I have a resolution that's supported by the board, and I know Sandy is here, Sandy Nuremberg, who's the executive director. Is Carol here? Did Carol make it? No? Okay. So Sandy, I'd like to invite you up to the podium, and I'll read some pieces of this resolution, and we will present it. It is, "November is National Hospice and Palliative Care Month," and it is considered to be the model for quality compassionate care for people facing life-limiting illnesses or injury. And hospice involves a team-oriented approach to expert medical care, emotional, spiritual support, and expressly tailored to patients' needs and wishes. The hospice programs are nationwide and continue to increase, from the first program that opened in 1974 to approximately 5,000 programs today, serving an estimated 1.56 million people nationwide in 2009. Hospice is committed to upholding the dignity of human experience by providing free practical and emotional assistance, free practical and emotional assistance, to individuals and families who are facing a life-threatening illness, as well as bereavement support to persons dealing with grief. Hospice trains hundreds of bereavement volunteers to assist with the care of patients and their families and to facilitate grief support group with no limits placed on the amount of time that hospice volunteers can work with a patient and a family, whether providing volunteer hospice care or grief support. Volunteer hospice respectfully and without charge treat patients, support networks, emphasizing palliative rather than curative treatment, understanding that hospice is truly about dignity, humanity, and hope. So it's my pleasure to bring this down and present it to you, Sandy, on behalf of all hospices in our county, and I know that some of, all of us have probably in our respective districts, hospice. And this is an opportunity for us to recognize and thank them for the work that they do and to recognize this National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. So please, Sandy.
Thank you very much, Chair Long and supervisors. It's my pleasure to be here to accept this on behalf of all hospices in Ventura County, because Camrio Hospice is but one of them. And I feel a little, Sue has done such an excellent advertisement for us that I almost feel guilty standing up here, but to be able to do hospice work is a gift in a person's life, and I thank you one and all for acknowledging the work we do.
Thank you, Sandy. We'll do this and see.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. I wish you. Thank you, Sue. Madam Chair, while you're on your way back, I just wanted to say to Sue Hughes that we've had lots of moments of inspiration, and the bar is very high for moments of inspiration. But that was the most inspiring moment that we've had here in the boardroom. You handled that really well. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to, if we could rise for our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Mr. Nicole, would you lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and with every sorrow.
Thank you. Okay, now, we have our minutes, and they have been provided to us. Take action on the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve, and a second. Please vote. And those pass unanimously. And now, we have agenda review. Good morning, Mr. Nicole.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am pleased and somewhat surprised to announce that there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. No changes to the agenda, so we'll take action to accept the agenda as presented. There's a motion and a second. Please vote on that same, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. Then we have our consent agenda items 10 through 14.
Ask that we could talk about 12 and 13.
12 and 13?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, then, why don't we do that? We have folks here to address that?
Yeah, number 12.
Okay, 12.
Yeah.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Just curious, looking at what we're doing here is that we're increasing about $60,000. As you said, we're extending this time period. That's not really my issue on this. My issue is, as I said, you know-
On the original contract?
On these contracts here is that we're not increasing any clients or anything, but when I look at these numbers, and this whole thing is costing about almost $18,000 per person, I was just trying to figure out, what are we doing? What are we getting for this service, trying to get people back to work? I mean, it's a very expensive program, as you and I had talked about, and I don't know if you've got any other answers.
Yeah, I got some information on the details. Let me separate this. This is right, what is before you right now is an amendment to the original contract for $60,000 to extend the contract and the life of the contract from December to June end, so a six-month extension. That's what this action item is, but the question's relating to the total contract and the value of the total contract for 30 individuals here, which comes out to be about 77 per. The contract is a developmental contract with the Ventura Adult School System in developing curriculum and activities around allied health careers. So part of the contract is developing a short-term certificated curriculum that an individual can be in to become certified out of the curriculum in order then to secure a job. This particular contract does multiple things. It's serving a cohort of 30, as well as developing curriculum associated with allied health careers, so it's doing two things there. In addition, the cost is a little bit higher than what we normally see in just a straight training contract, because all the case management responsibilities have been pushed to the contractor. Normally, we handle those in-house, but due to capacity, it has been provided out to the contractor to do case management services, which means that they're doing individual assessment, case planning, supportive services, while these individuals are in training, as well as job search, job connection, and paid experience, if that works for them. So it's kind of a comprehensive contract in that regard.
Since we are developing this new curriculum and everything, next time this would come up, would it be a lot cheaper for us?
It should be, it should be just the training costs associated with that course. Two things that's going is that the curriculum cycle to shorten not only the time in class, but the process by which to become a certified or credited-type trainings is shortened, and so therefore, it's more costly to do in a short period of time. So that's why it's kind of investment cost at this point in time. But as we see the nicks go around, it should just be the unit cost for that training.
I know upfront, it's always more expensive, and we want to do it in a way to get people back to work. So, okay, I just wanted to try to understand what this was.
Okay.
Thank you. And I also talked to you about this one, too.
Yes.
Just that this is focused in Ventura. We have dislocated workers and people who need assistance out in the East County, too, in the Cano Valley Unified School District. I'm sure we'd hopefully be interested in doing some of that training, too, so I'd like to see when the next RFP comes out that we make sure that they get one, too.
We will invite them as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and then you have questions on item 13, yes?
I don't know if anybody was, oh, here he is. Was, I appreciate what they're doing, consolidating, doing that. That's great, and hopefully that's going to save us money in consolidation. My other concern was, are we, with all the stuff going on in the library system right now, are we at this long-term lease for five, five or six years here, or five years, two months? Is that an issue for us or not? Well, as we consolidate.
Good morning. Even with the issues going on, even should Camrio finish and leave, and should Ventura choose to leave later, we're still going to be doing processing, we're still going to have IT services, we're still going to have literacy services, children's services and administration. Those are all going to need to be housed. And by far, the largest space is taken up for processing and cataloging of material. That space need really won't change a lot, even if we go down in service. There's a certain amount of space that's needed for doing that.
Okay, so even if you had 15, 16 locations or 10 locations, you'd still have the same requirement?
We still have to process materials, and it still takes a fair, and we still have those kind of back services that we need to do, too. The amount of, there will be a small decrease in staffing, but we're actually overfilling this building just a little bit, so it will be a little tighter here than we currently are, but we'll all be in one space, so we're trading off proximity for a little bit of space.
Okay, well, I appreciate you pre-planning that, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have our library director there. Could I just ask one other question?
Sure.
Does Bob Edwards support this move?
I have no idea, but I think he's pretty fond of libraries.
I just want to pass on to everybody, if you didn't get to hear it. I had a chance to listen to it, but our library services director was featured on Bob Edwards' weekend, this past weekend, so there she was talking to a national audience of millions of people about libraries, and there was one statement that you said. You said, "No matter what library, it's been the most rewarding possible job, rewarding job possible."
I think I said it was the coolest job possible.
Very good subject.
Because I beat myself up a little over sounding like I was about 16 later, but yeah.
Yeah, in this day and age, that's quite a statement to be able to make. So anyway, congratulations, you handled yourself really well on that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You know, I also heard that, and I just wanted to say that-
I keep trying to leave unless you just stand here.
You know, my understanding of the whole issue of privatization, you know, was greatly increased by that discussion, and I think that would be something worthy of having at the Board of Supervisors, too, because there's a lot of implications and unintended consequences that people don't even think about when they lose their public libraries to a private for-profit company. So maybe we can do that in the future.
I would really love to. I'm really concerned about it, and I'd love an opportunity to talk with you about it. I'm going to stand here now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then, that, questions have been answered on those items, so we now take action on consent 10 through 14. There's a motion and a second. Let's vote to adopt a consent agenda. And that approve it, and that is unanimous. Okay, now, we will have an opportunity to go to public comment, and it is my pleasure to invite up for public comment. We have a delegation here from the 2010 California Shanghai Principal Exchange Program. And this is an exchange program that's in cooperation with the California school boards, and it aims to help Chinese educators gain a better understanding of the educational philosophy, instructional, and management strategies that enable California students to excel in higher education and their pursuit of careers. This is a program, the first phase of this program was very successful, and it's now in its third cohort, and there are six districts in California who are selected to participate in the Shanghai-California Principal Exchange Program. And Wainini Elementary School District is one of these six districts, so they've asked to come and speak to us under public comment, and I think it's quite an honor to have them here to speak to us, and I would invite up first the board president of the Wainini Elementary School District, and that's Ms. Sheila Godino. And welcome.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, and Mr. Nicole, please excuse my voice. It's really a hazard of both my jobs as a school board member, being in the schools and working in the hospital. I'm exposed to a lot. I am president of the Wainini School District, and with me today is my superintendent, Dr. Jerry Danenberg.
Please come on up. I know Jerry's going to speak.
Board member Darlene Bruno, CBO Christine McCloskey, principal Colleen Robertson. And then, I would like to introduce you to two wonderful women, Li Yun, better known to us as Lily, and, no, I won't say this right, Yu Mei, her name is Mai. This is Mai. Okay, they are both principals in Shanghai, China. There's a little bit of background. Last fall, I traveled to China in November, and returning, I went to a conference in December. And there, I met Professor Jenny Kuan from UCLA, and she told me about this Principal Exchange Program that they were doing with Shanghai. She's spearheading the program, along with Dr. Bruce Carter at USC. And she really encouraged me to apply. And to make a long story short, I did, on my own, without consulting, hoping they would go along with it. As Supervisor Long said, we were chosen with five other districts in California, and it's really a great honor. This year, they had a lot of applicants, and they did a lot of background checks, and they just felt that we were really appropriate for the program. For the last four weeks, we've had the privilege of working and living with these wonderful women. They have become part of my family and the other host families. I have Mai with me for two more weeks, and I'm really dreading the end of her stay. She's a wonderful lady. They've opened doors to their world and shared stories with us that I'll never forget. I believe Lynda Lee provided you with some background information. For time's sake, I will just say that in the spring, we will do an exchange, and with the superintendent principals and host families, we will travel to China, money permitting. And I'm just really looking forward to it. Once again, I apologize for my voice, and now I'd like to introduce Dr. Jerry Danenberg, our superintendent.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Danenberg.
Good morning, and thank you, Board of Supervisors, for having us here, and Mr. Nicole. It was my pleasure to work at the role of my board. My board asked me to look into this program and to try to coordinate it, and in doing that, I called my administrative team together and said, "We have an opportunity, and is anybody interested?" And three of my administrators stepped forward and said, "Yes, we'd love to take part in this program." And two of them are here today, you'll meet them shortly. We put together a program. The exchange is for six weeks. The principals from China are here six weeks. They are staying with all of us at UC standing before you for different periods of time. Lily, I've been fortunate to have Lily in my home. She's maybe not been so fortunate, because I have five grandkids that have been over a lot, and, but she, they're wonderful with the children, and it's just a great, great honor to be part of this program and to share it with everybody, because- everybody, because good teaching is good teaching, whether it's in China, whether it's in the United States. And everybody's looking for a better way to educate our children. And so as they're getting things taken back with them, we're picking up things that we might be able to use to help our students. So we really appreciate the opportunity to be part of this exchange. And with that, I would like to introduce Christine McCloskey, who is one of the principal... Was the principal when we started this program. She's now my CBO. And so her role's changed, but she stayed very active in this. So Christine?
Good morning.
Good morning. Honorable Chairwoman Long, honorable board members, and Mr. Nicole. This has really been a pleasurable experience to be a part of. I've had the pleasure of hosting Lily in my home also for two weeks, and I have three children, a twelve-year-old, a fifteen-year-old, and a fifteen-month-old. So it's been quite an experience for the three of them interacting with her, and especially my twelve-year-old, my fifteen-year-old have lots of questions about Chinese customs, and then really enjoyed sharing our customs with them. We had the opportunity to go out trick-or-treating and to go to Disneyland, and they enjoyed those. Whereas Lily and I have just really enjoyed having a lot of conversations about education, what the education system is like in Shanghai, and sharing ideas. And I really look forward to a continuing conversation via email with both Mei and Lily. I really consider them to have become friends, and it's been such an honor to be a part of this program. And I thank our board members for getting us involved with this. So thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Colleen.
Yes.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning. Honorable Chairwoman Long, board members, and Mr. Nichols. It really has just been such a pleasure. You know, they came to learn best practices from us, but it's been very reciprocal that we've learned a lot from them. In fact, I took Mei into a... Lily into a third-grade classroom last week, and she opened up the student's reading book, and there was the story of Mulan. And our children are very familiar with that because of the Disney version. But that's actually a very well-known tale in China. All the children know that. And Lily was actually able to read the story to them in Mandarin and then translate. So how many third graders get that opportunity to actually have that experience? It was really wonderful. And I just... I want to thank Shayla for getting us involved in this program, because every... They've been out to all eleven schools, and every child that they've met, their graciousness, their kindness, I think they have provided such goodwill across the world. And I'm very... Just very honored to be part of this program. So thank you.
Thank you. And Darlene? Good morning.
Good morning. Honorable Chairman Long, and the rest of the board, and Mr. Nicole. Thank you for having us this morning. I think I'm going to give you a little bit of a different perspective, because I got to be a host family. I had Mei in my home for three weeks, and a lot of that time Lily was there also. So we got a wonderful exchange. I have three adult children, and I have four grandchildren. Do you have time for videos? No? Oh, I'll have to catch you someplace else to show you videos of my four adorable grandchildren. The discussions have been just wonderful. My grandchildren have gotten to love them. On Halloween, Lily and Mei were not there. They asked. The three-year-old and the two-year-old said, "Where's Ms. Mei and Ms. Lily?" You know, they expected them to be part of our family. We got a list of protocols from the district. Chinese families don't hug. We broke all those protocols right away. Now these Chinese families hug. It's been wonderful, the differences in the language. I was worried at first about, well, what will I prepare to cook for these ladies? What will I make for dinner? They have cooked for us. If you are on Facebook at all, you'll see my daughter is on Facebook. I had a real Chinese meal cooked by a real Chinese lady. I mean, we've just been very impressed. One of my most memorable experiences is talking with Mei one day in the car, and she asked me, "The numbers on the house, is that the address?" And I said, "Yes." And she said, "But you're going to address the Board of Supervisors?" I said, "Yes." And she's wearing a dress. So you can see the complications that we've had to face and the fun conversations we've had. It's just been wonderful, and I feel like both these ladies are part of our family, as do my children and my grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we get to hear from, I don't know, Mei?
Mei.
Mei. And good morning and welcome.
So, dear Honorable Madam Chairlong, Honorable Board Members, and Mr. Nicole, it is my privilege to make a comment at your board meeting today. My name, my Chinese name is Yu Xue Mei, a principal of Shanghai Fengxian Ping An School, People's Republic of China. As a part of California Shanghai Principal Exchange Program delegation visiting the United States, I came to Ventura County to gain a better understanding of the educational philosophy and instructional and management strategies. In the past four weeks, I was welcomed by such warm host families. My stay with Mrs. Godino and Mrs. Bruno has been rewarding. It has been an unforgettable experience. The careful schedule of activities, school visits, rich school activities, and fine teaching management tools left positive, good impression. I would like to express my heartfelt appreciation and channel this great experience afforded to me by Wanini School District, the city councils, school district administrators, host principals, and all of you. This exchange program will benefit educational practices in both of our countries. I welcome all of you as guests to Shanghai. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mei? Good morning.
Good morning. Dear Honorable Madam Chairlong, Honorable Board Members, and Mr. Nickom, I'm Li Yun from Shanghai, China, principal of Heaven Primary School. Because of the California Shanghai Principal Exchange Program, I'm so fortunate to be here for weeks in the Wanini Elementary School District. We have visited more than eleven schools. American educators work professionally and make opportunities for every student to make individual goals. I have learned a lot from them. All the experiences have given me lots of individual memories. I want to say thank you to all the people, Wanini School District Board Members, and my host families and host principals who helped us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to step down just to do a quick picture, board members, and if you have any questions you want to ask of these principals from Shanghai. I know Supervisor Bennett does. I just want to tell you quickly that Mei has a daughter who's a senior in high school.
Yes.
Right? And Lily has a son who's a senior in high school. And I'll come down to do a picture, and I just have one quick question. How many children do you have in your school, under you as principal? How many children?
In my school?
In the school.
Twelve thousand. Twelve hundred, I'm sorry. Twelve hundred, yes.
Twelve hundred, okay.
In my school, about eight hundred, because we... Our school is an elementary school.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? I'll step down to do a quick...
I'd love to ask a few questions. First, before I ask, I just want to say hello to Colleen. Colleen and I did counseling and administrative credential work back decades ago, it seems. Yeah, back as we both were teachers and starting into administration. So nice to see you as an elementary principal. And of course, to have Jerry back. Jerry was administrator in the Ventura Unified School District. And I'm sure Jerry is helping us with Measure H today after he finishes here, trying to get it to pass. But if I could ask just two quick questions of the principals from China. One, could you... My two questions are, could you tell us what you're doing in terms of English education? Your English is very good, both of you. Really, it was remarkably good. Really appreciated that. So what is going on with foreign language education overall? How much of it is English? When do they... Do students start? Do all students start? Or do they have a choice of what other languages?
To teach our students when start in Shanghai and from grade first. From grade first, we study English.
So first... All first graders do English?
In Shanghai, oh.
Only in Shanghai?
Yes.
Okay.
In some province, perhaps not. From some province, from third grade, some from sixth.
Okay. And how much time do students spend on English?
One week, four or five periods. One period, just thirty-five minutes or forty minutes.
Uh-huh. For the... For how many weeks?
Every week.
Every week for the whole year?
Yes, every week.
And how long is the school year?
School year about...
Forty weeks.
Yes, forty weeks.
Forty weeks?
Yes.
All right, with twelve weeks.
We have professional English teacher.
Uh-huh.
Yes. Only teach English.
And my other question is, what's the biggest difference that you see between our schools here and your schools there?
Many differences. The arrangement may be different.
The what?
Because our school, the teachers, the students stay at... From the elementary school till the city high school, the students all stay in the same classroom, and the teachers go around to them and give the lessons. And in the elementary school, our teachers are separated from different subjects. One teacher teaches Chinese, only Chinese. Other teacher teaches English, only English. And they work together in the teacher's office, and they... If they have their periods, they go to the class, they go to the classroom.
Excuse me.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Yeah. I bet there are many... I'd love to hear about all the differences. But that's what you've been doing for the last four weeks, I'm sure, is explaining the differences. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank the Wanini School District and Administration for this exchange program. I think it's excellent. And I've... We've had Chinese delegations come to Ventura County, and it's just outstanding to hear the interaction and the efforts that we're applying for both countries. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I'll get a hug.
I'm glad you're here.
And thank you for bringing the... We're here. Come on. Everyone gather around and take a quick picture. Okay. Good. And enjoy the rest of your visit.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a pleasure. Good to see you. Jerry, good to see you. Thank you.
students that speak multiple languages are certainly going to be ahead. Just one more example of the United States system has to get better.
I think the key that they're... They do is that they teach their kids young.
Yes.
It's so easy to learn. I think we make a mistake in ours by teaching them, and I think that's right. Foreign language issue, I think that's...
Thank you again, and safe travels. Thank you. And board members, thank you for taking time to do that. That came up rather quickly, and I just... It was very remarkable for Wanini to be involved in this. So thank you. Okay, we have some other public speaker cards here, and let me... John Davis?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairlong, board members, and Mr. Nickel. My name is John Davis. I live at 12179 Konigstein Road in Upper Ojai. I want to address CUP application LU09-0036, made by the applicant's consultant Jennifer Welsh for Danny Everett and Tiaza Taylor for a wedding venue at 12695 Konigstein Road in Upper Ojai.
Mr. Davis, I'm sorry. Would you pull the mics a little closer together?
Sure.
There. That way we'll pick you.
I represent concerned neighbors who have attempted over the last eighteen months to encourage the county to require a full EIR, because we feel that there are very significant impacts in the areas of fire hazard, traffic noise, noise, and light pollution, and that the product is entirely incompatible with the neighborhood character, which is Zoned OS20 and is primarily residential. The initial study checklist was issued at 4:30 PM on Friday, October 29th, and we received a copy from the county planner yesterday morning. This document was used in the decision by the county planning department to require a mitigated negative declaration from the applicants in order to satisfy the CEQA requirements. The applicant is requesting thirty events per year with up to two hundred and fifty guests per event, and will provide parking for a hundred and thirty-eight cars with valet parking. All of this is proposed at the top of a steep and windy dead-end road about two miles up from Route 150, and which in places is less than fourteen feet wide. The neighbors, to my knowledge, are all vehemently opposed to this use being sanctioned in a residential neighborhood, and are dumbfounded that thus far, the county agencies involved have essentially rubber-stamped it with only two minor mitigations, which are the shielding of parking lights and a requirement that one neighbor, who does farm avocados, and who also is incidentally opposed to the project, cooperates with regard to chemical spray drift and equipment noise. In other words, to assure the safety and comfort of wedding guests with no apparent regard for the local residents or the character of the neighborhood. Now, we understand that the event venue conditional use was initiated by the county to benefit farmers who could use additional income from hosting weddings, animal shows, and corporate events. Our assumption is that the approval process is geared towards farmers and may well be appropriate in agricultural areas. I want to emphasize that this applicant on Konigstein Road is not now nor ever has been a farmer. He does not farm his land, but he ran a wedding venue illegally for several years before neighborhood complaints of noise, light pollution, overflowing septic facilities, and drunken guests careening down the road at midnight forced him to apply for the CUP. Furthermore, they conducted a wedding event this year while the CUP was under review in violation of the terms of the wedding process. Sorry, of the review process. They are now potentially being required to monitor the number of guests, frequency of events, and fire safety regulations related to smoking and the use of candles, having demonstrated over the course of several years a total disregard not only for their neighbors, but also the legal requirements of the county. The county now proposes putting these quote-unquote "scot laws" in charge of assuring our safety from smokers, drinkers, and drivers, many of whom have no understanding of the fire dangers in an area of dense chaparral. In farm settings, one would expect such events to be surrounded by flat irrigated fields. We're talking about a proposed venue that backs up to chaparral wilderness, where there have been three recent fires, including the Konigstein Fire of 1999, which burned forty-three hundred acres and cost the county five million dollars. We are totally bemused that the county fire department should see fit to sign off on this project when there is essentially only one lane access, and in the case of fire, two hundred and fifty guests requesting their keys from valet parkers and then driving down an unfamiliar road with no guardrails precipitous drop-offs on both sides, heading directly into the path of emergency vehicles attempting to reach the fire. Finally, I want to point out that the county traffic engineer has also signed off on this significant increase to weekend traffic load on a highway already notorious for weekend joyriding, and at the Konigstein Junction, where the creek bridge road surface is in poor repair, there are inadequate guardrails on the Konigstein approach, and the sightlines both west and east are severely restricted on joining the 150. Now, the issue of wedding venue CUPs being challenged by irate neighbors is a familiar one to the county.
And Mr. Davis, if you could wrap up?
This is my wrap-up paragraph. Thank you. This is one more case for an applicant using the letter of the law in total defiance of its spirit. We would be happy to offer the expertise of our advisors in helping the county craft language that would establish relevant review criteria for this commercial use. language that would establish relevant review criteria for this commercial use in residential Finally, I, I want to say that we intend to vigorously challenge what we consider this negligent review of the environmental impacts by the county and its agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
A couple things, number one, I appreciate you coming down right away.
Right.
Because there are timelines and deadlines to appeal things like planning directors' decisions, et cetera.
Sure.
Uh, and so your promptness is, is just helpful for the process overall. This is not, as, I, I think you hear in a pretty articulate person who's pretty familiar with sort of the overall history of this in terms of putting this, this project in perspective. Uh, I just called up to my office, I've asked my staff to come down and meet with you right now.
I appreciate that.
So if you'll just look, if you'll just look for them back out in the lobby, Mr. Offerman, we've been there before.
Okay.
Uh, so that we're making, make, make sure that we understand what kind of notifications you've received and what information you've got.
Very good.
This is my time.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Liz Villanueva, Villanvera, Villan, I'm sorry, Liz. Please correct me.
Morning. My name's Elizabeth Villanova. I'm an LVN at La Cisa Surgeon Care VCMC Satellite Clinic, I've been working there for nine years. I am a mother of two, and struggles to keep my kids on healthy families, like every year. We want to negotiate health care for our families, our voices as part of, of care workers already represented by our patients' care. It becomes difficult to work in a clinic whose mission is to provide health care to community without discrimination, yet will not offer the same to its workers or families. Management has now offered to make changes, this has only happened after we decided to become union. We believe our union will change, will create change, a neutral ground to negotiate concerns and issues related to our workplace, and conditions without fear, possibility of employer retaliation. I vote, I'm here to vote to form a union along with hundreds of clinic workers, because we, we need to have a voice in our working conditions that affect patient care, delaying our recognition is, is another day patient care at VCMC Satellite Clinic is not improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne Palacios? Good morning.
Hello, my name is Yvonne Piato, and I am a comprehensive prenatal services provider at the Fillmore Clinic, and I am a mother of five. And as a VCMC Fillmore Satellite Clinic healthcare worker, and as a resident of Piru, I come to you as my elected leaders to highlight the importance of recognizing VCMC Satellite Clinic workers as a union and recognizing the right leadership for over four hundred clinic workers. I have proudly worked at the Fillmore Clinic for over three years and over ten years serving our patients in both Fillmore and Piru. And more than ever before, we have had to do more with less. As a result, the Fillmore Clinic on average loses a staff person once a month. We are only a clinic of fifteen. Just last Friday, one more girl was fired, she was only there for one week. With this high turnover rate, we have to wear multiple hats, but it's not enough, our patients are affected and going somewhere else. In fact, I was an interim manager for about six months, both running front office, back office, CPSP worker, and I was doing front office and back office at the Piru Clinic. Patients have come to my doorstep and have expressed how the turnover has affected them, and continually questioned what is going on, and would like answers as to why they cannot build a rapport with their nurses or the staff members where they're being seen. I work at the Fillmore Clinic because I love the community I serve, I love my work, I love it so much that while on maternity leave, I have carried out work assignments to make sure our Pyru site runs effectively, and also patients have come to ask me, question me how they can get on health insurance, and I still help them, I've never turned anyone away. I also feel personally discriminated due to the recent changes, uh, in regards to the changes that Ms. Villanova just mentioned, our management turned and gave us free health insurance. I'm on maternity leave, and I'm being told that I'm not entitled to it because I'm not there. I still feel that I'm an employee and should have the same rights to the benefits that are being offered to their family members that are employees that are currently working. VCMC Satellite Clinic workers serves the most needed, we are perceived as a public entity by our patients and recognized as a public entity by Public Employee Relations Board. Public patient care standards need to be applied by a public entity like Ventura County as a joint employer. Today, on Election Day, state leaders will be voted in by Californians, the voice of the majority will be respected and carried out, and I and a majority of my coworkers voted in favor of forming a union as public employees. I would hope that as elected officials, you'd agree that a vote reflects a community's voice. Please respect our voice, the voice of VCMC Satellite Clinic workers for our patients, for our families, and for Ventura County residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in to speak to us, thank you. Okay, uh, that concludes all of the public requests to speak, I have no further names submitted, so, thank you again, those who did come in to speak to the board, and I would like to now have Board Chairman, Supervisor Foy.
Thank you very much. I would like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list and call out one individual, Eloise Brown, who was the former mayor of Moore Park. And, uh, and something after my own heart, she had done in nineteen forty-seven, she led this first successful taxpayer protest, gaining reduction taxes improperly imposed by the city.
In nineteen forty-seven?
In nineteen forty-seven, I love it. Anyway, but it was, you know, in her seventies when she served as, as mayor, and, you know, and, I mean, as, in the, in her seventies, she served on the council eighty-six and ninety and was, uh, mayor in, in eighty-eight. Just, uh, this goes to show, any age, you can, if you have a passion for what you do, you can do it, so, it was great. Also, I'd like to recognize a group, uh, it's For the Troops, is what it is, a nonprofit, it's called For the Troops, which sends packages to soldiers and, and deployed in Afghanistan, Iraq for five years now. They recently celebrated sending their twenty-fifth thousand packages, twenty-five thousand packages. Yeah, Paula Cornell and Jenny Jovison are the founders, and in two thousand and seven, Sycamore Village donated a storefront for them so they could, uh, start collecting all these things, so it's, it's been great. Uh, the groups, like I said, up to, they sent out ten thousand packages in two thousand and nine, and then fifteen thousand more cents, so they've been doing a tremendous job. Here's something else that's interesting for us in the East County. Moore Park was, uh, to be gradually named, uh, being named the sixteen, for the Sixteenth Annual Cozmont Rose Institute Cost of Doing Business Survey. They were one of the top ten least expensive cities in the state to do it, and it's interesting, um, when you look at California, because if I look at this, it's, if, in this chart they had, it was really interesting, it costs thirty dollars based on the same criteria to have business in Moore Park, but if I look at Thousand Oaks, it was fifteen hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the same, same criteria. In Simi Valley, it was thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. And in LA, in LA.
Want to read the report?
In LA County.
See this report?
Yeah, I've, I've got copies here for you, too.
Oh, okay, good.
Wow, yeah, in LA County was thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for the same thing. It's amazing, yeah, here's some, uh, here's some copies of this, the article, yeah, but, anyway, it was interesting, but that's one of the things, I mean, you, you see this, this tax rate, I know from my own business in LA County, it's unbelievably expensive, and I know, uh, Blue Cross originally had moved out of LA City, it saved them millions and millions of dollars for that, but, uh, we've got to try and find some controls on some of these, these costs. Also, one other, other thing that was, uh, I had the opportunity to attend Bob Brooks's retirement event that he had, uh, up at the Reagan Library, and it was, it was a tremendous event, about four hundred and fifty people, and a lot of people from the county had showed up, and I thought that was very kind of them, uh, it was just, just to celebrate a tremendous career and a, a man who people had respected and done a lot of things, and you don't realize somebody like that, all of a sudden you think you're busy, and all of a sudden they start reading how many boards he's on, and I think he has three or four master's degrees and this, and I mean, it's amazing how you, you do all that, it's, it was, it was, it was a great night, and, uh, just say thank you to him for, and as we presented that from all of us, so it was wonderful. The other thing that was, was great the other night, uh, last Friday night, had the opportunity to attend a, an event with a group called Forever Found, I don't know if you read that in the article and in the paper in regards to, we don't realize, I guess we probably realize how much of the young girls that are given as sex slaves, you know, in, in Bangkok and some of those parts of the world, but we also don't realize that three hundred and thirty thousand of them are done here in the United States. And this group, Forever Found, had a big event and brought a lot of these different groups in to talk about it and raising money to protect these young girls, and it was just, I mean, it was tremendous to see the response, a thousand people showed up for this, it was great, they raised forty, fifty thousand dollars to give, because, and one of the women talked about how in Bangkok, they went and bought this girl for twenty-five dollars to get her out of that because her mom was going to sell her to somebody for twenty dollars, and so, it was just a, just a heart-touching event, but it just goes to show some of the issues, and just to see, and these, and the people that started this Forever Found, they're only twenty, twenty-four and twenty-five years old, and just really a heart to, to protect these young girls around the world, and so it was, uh, it was just a special, special event. Anyway, and then, uh, today, vote. I got my vote, but I voted yesterday, but, but it, it's, it's an opportunity for historic election for all of us, but it's just always a great opportunity for us to, to show that we believe in the system that we live under, and that we have an opportunity to express our beliefs and what we believe, because somebody will be elected and somebody will have influence on your life, you hope to have influence on who those people are, so, um, it'll be interesting to see what happens tonight, because this country and this state have a lot at stake right now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Foy.
Thank you, and, uh, you know, we have to keep church and state separate, but come election, I often get religion. A lot of praying going on there. We're happy to be able to go to the ribbon-cutting for the Lewis Road Overpass, which Supervisor Long officiated at, and that was really nice to see, being able in these hard times to be able to put together lots of different funding sources to see that we can get the Lewis Road, um, safe, safe, safer particularly. Uh, also, uh, November fifth, we have the Area Agency on Aging is having their open house, which will make sure and attend and encourage other people to attend also. And also, uh, it's actually a couple weeks ago, but I failed to mention, the last board meeting was, I was able to go to the Sheriff's Graduating Academy, which was nice to see that we are able to bring in some new deputies to our force, particularly as we see others retiring out, so it was nice to be able to see, and also appreciate your honoring of, um, of Eloise Brown. Uh, I had never met her, but I sure loved her letters to the editor, that lady, you know, spoke out and, you know, called a spade a spade, and, uh, you always appreciate that. Someday I hope to be, you know, nice and old and be able to do things like that.
Nice and old. Yeah, thank you. Supervisor Derrick also?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you so much, uh, you know, I attended several, uh, meetings and, uh, and events over the weekend, but one special event that I, I attended was Friday, and that was the MABA, the Mexican-American Bar Association Fellowship Award Program. And, uh, we always talk about the one percent of the kids that do bad, you know, they always come out on the front page or on TV and so forth, and then ninety-nine percent of the students that do good, never, you seem probably on page nineteen or eighteen or, or some of the section, but there was, uh, six Latino students that were awarded there at the MABA Association at the Marriott in Oxnard, and that's just, uh, this is straight A students that, uh, they're wannabe attorneys, for example, Anna Choda, she was Ventura College student that's, uh, studying to, to be an attorney. Then Carlos Espinoza, who's attending at Davis, he was, uh, got the Respect of the Dean and Teachers Award, and he wants to be an attorney, and Claudia Calderon, who's attending UC Davis, is also attending, uh, law school there, and then Juan Carlos Hareki is attending UCLA, and wants to be an attorney too, and then April Navarro is, is also attending Davis University, and then, uh, Jacqueline Ruffin is also attending UCLA, and all those kids got those awards, and it was just outstanding to see the, there was quite a few judges there, and probably maybe half or three-quarters of all the attorneys, uh, from the county were there to honor this young kids. And also, our chief was there too, which we're going to honor today, Chief Kromback. So I see him here in the audience, and we're going to give him an award there too, but it was a great, uh, great to see those kids, you know, get those awards, and, and, uh, again, I saw that article on page eighteen, instead of the front page of the, of the newspaper, so, I just wanted to share that with them, that, uh, we're very proud of the young kids. Thank you. And also, I want to adjourn in memory of this folks here.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Um, I really appreciate Supervisor Foy bringing up the issue about Forever Young and that organization, uh, it is one of the scourges of the world right now, and there are some people that are really stepping up, uh, and as you talk about it being twenty-four and twenty-five-year-old people, it's, it's interesting, there's been a, sort of a culture at our universities lately that if you have talent and everything, you go and develop something entrepreneurial for, for yourself, uh, and, uh, we need more and more of these young people to be starting to focus on, on the, on these other issues. Um, the, I attended the Gold Coast Anniversary Luncheon with Supervisor Long, uh, that's pretty remarkable, I mean, twenty, uh, twenty years ago, recycling was not the same kind of word that it is now out there, and they really had the initiative to sort of forge forward, uh, quickly as soon as a state law was, uh, was passed, and, and grabbed the bull by the horns, and they've done a great job, I think, of really promoting recycling in Ventura County, so, I want to congratulate Gold Coast publicly here. Uh, we had cert graduation in the city of Ventura, um, on October thirtieth, we're continuing to grow that program, I'm really impressed with the number of people doing that. Then I'd like to talk just a little bit about the same thing Supervisor Foy did, which is, uh, people getting out to vote, um, and a concern I have, uh, as the election's going, number one, I really appreciate living in a country where we peacefully transfer power by election, and we all just trust the election and, and we go forward from there, but at the same time, I just have two things I'd like to point out here, and, and the interest of collegiality, I got two PowerPoint slides for you to take a look at, Supervisor Foy. So just one, real quickly here, right, it's a very interesting fact that has just come out, in two thousand and seven is the last time that they were able to do this, but income distribution in this country has changed dramatically since the nineteen sixties. One percent of the people received eight percent of the country's wealth in the nineteen sixties, in two thousand and seven, one percent received twenty-three percent, had a dramatic change in income distribution. Next slide, please, and if you combine that with the recent Supreme Court decision, Citizens United case, which essentially allows for unlimited campaign spending, I think that we all have to be at least conscious of the fact, and by the way, much of this unlimited campaign spending, because of the way the federal election, um, has, uh, rule, uh, committee has ruled, you don't identify it, uh, only ten percent of the money is being identified that's being spent, ninety percent of it's just, you don't even know where the money's coming from. Uh, we have to be concerned that you combine this with the previous slide, and that is, those people that, uh, are at the top now can use that, uh, those resources in an unlimited way, uh, to have significant influence over these elections, and so while I think we all appreciate living in a democracy, I think we have to be concerned. The final thing I would leave you with this is, I think someday in the history books, this Citizens United case will be viewed like the Dred Scott decision was viewed by the Supreme Court, the Dred Scott decision of nineteen, of eighteen fifty-seven, when they ruled that, that African-American slaves were not human beings, they were property, and therefore it, uh, they had no constitutional protection at all, and I think we look back on that and we say that was a huge mistake. Someday, I think we'll look back on this Supreme Court decision and say this was a huge mistake to just have unlimited amounts of money come from corporations and unions as if corporations and unions were, had the same rights as individual people in terms of freedom of expression. I think almost no other industrialized countries that we compete with in the world do this, we do it, it's a big mistake. But, uh, thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity to, uh, offer my op-ed piece here, uh, by PowerPoint on Election Day, thank you.
Yes, and thank you, and, uh, I think the message from all of us is to vote, um, to really exercise what is a freedom we have in this country, and to trust that your vote does count, is counted, and does make a difference, um, and to, it's too late to say vote early, vote often, because today's the day, um, and I would say, uh, I, I, I look at, uh, what I exercise in my vote as, as I'm voting for and not voting in protest, I vote for moving this country forward and, and, and our local elections, so.
Madam Chair, also I'd like to share everybody, uh, tell everybody to vote, you know, I've been voting since I was eighteen, and that was about twenty years ago, so, vote, thank you.
Um, I'd like to, uh, I have a, a list to adjourn in memory of here, um, some folks, and, uh, I'd also like to quickly just mention to the board and provide copies to you that, um, this weekend, November sixth, from ten to four, the Rancho Camulus Museum National Historic Landmark in Piru is going to have Helen Hunt Jackson's classic California novel, Ramona, come to life, it is a celebration. This is, and, and I know most of the, the board members. This is, and I know most of the Board members, you know that this is a property that we have supported over the years in earthquake recovery for the restoration of this historic landmark in, with the Rancho Comulis property out in Piru, just past Piru. This is a fundraiser, of course, for them, but I have seen this presentation of Ramona, and it really is remarkable. So if you want to spend a nice afternoon, please support the cause and support a wonderful project. And I'd also say that, yes, the Lewis Road widening was exciting, wanted to have it done, complete, on time, under budget, and excellent project. Very good for all of us in this county and those who visit our wonderful university and all of our workers who work out the military base. And we have a safe road. And it was an excellent project, and it was complete collaboration between Caltrans, the city, the county, and the Transportation VCTC Commission, including the State Commission and the funding package we put together to make that happen. And lastly, change your batteries. Change your batteries on your smoke alarms in your house. This is the weekend to do that. It is setting your clocks back to daylight savings time and a reminder to do the same with the batteries to keep your home safe. Fire Department released a press release on the same, and it is a good time to remember to do that and to keep your home and property and family safe. Okay, it is almost exactly nine forty-five. So I know we have some folks who are here to move ahead on our time-certain items, and those of you who are waiting for others will get to them in between, so hold on. All right, nine forty-five, we're calling up Supervisor Erica. Your item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I really, it's a great honor to give this resolution to a great person, a person that I've known for a long time, Chief Kromback. I'd like to have, Mr. Kromback, you know, has been probably the best or the best cheerleader for the city of Oxnard. You know, he has always consistently been in the forefront in the community of Oxnard to keep it safe, crime-free. He's been the leader in the community, and he's been in many, many events. And he's always helped our youth, our families, and he's a great role model for our youth there in Oxnard. I remember many times going over to different storefronts, and Chief Kromback was there either handing cookies or food or something for our children. So it's really going to, it's an honor for me to read this resolution and have Chief Kromback come to the podium and then maybe share a couple of words after I finish reading this resolution. And this is a resolution honoring John, Chief Kromback, upon his retirement from the city of Oxnard Police Department. In March nineteen seventy-eight, Chief Kromback became, excuse me, began his career as deputy with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. Soon after that, he transferred to the Port Juani Police Department. And thereafter, he worked until nineteen eighty-five, followed by a brief tenure with the Ventura Police Department. Whereas in nineteen eighty-five, Chief Kromback began his career with the city of Oxnard Police Department. And in nineteen ninety, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. And during that, his tenure as sergeant, he was appointed to the SWAT team leader for Oxnard, where he continued to serve until he was appointed the rank of police commander in nineteen ninety-five. Whereas in two thousand and five, Chief Kromback was appointed the nineteenth chief of police for the history of the Oxnard Police Department. Whereas Chief Kromback has consistently shown experience in progressive leadership and was instrumental in integrating several dynamic changes within the department, developing a neighborhood policing model for all four sections of the city. Whereas Chief of Oxnard Department, Kromback, has shown through his department committee of policing crime prevention efforts, that crime sharply declined by sixty-five percent since nineteen ninety-two. As a result, among that population of one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, the city of Oxnard is known as one of the five safest cities of the nation in the population range. Whereas Chief Kromback has continually shown his commitment and leadership to the community as well as to the department through his involvement in various organizations, eventually earning the title of Oxnard Man of the Year in two thousand and seven. Now, therefore, that it be resolved that Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pride in acknowledging and commending Chief Kromback for thirty-two years of protection and dedication to the residents of Ventura County and Oxnard. And this is presented on the second day of November. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
And I'll go down to give you the second.
Chairperson Long and members of the Board, thank you very much. I, when I was driving up here, I was remembering March twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy-eight, as I stood at the back of the Police Academy building and had two senior deputy tac officers telling us that we really weren't going to make it and that if we did make the academy program, we wouldn't make it for thirty years. And as a twenty-four-year-old, I thought thirty years just was an eternity. It was six years longer than I'd been alive. And so then, in the next moment, I thought that that eternity went by in the blink of an eye. And so here I am, thirty-two and a half years later, and I've had, it's hard to put into words the experience of being part of law enforcement in Ventura County. And I know we helped a lot of people along the way, and I'm extremely proud of that. And I appreciate Supervisor, all the comments about what we've done in Oxnard, but, you know, that's, as much as I'd like to take credit for that. I remember Bob Owens telling me that the definition of a leader is someone who creates opportunities and removes barriers. And that's what I've tried to do along the way. So it was a team effort, a great team effort. And it was the, that brading of the political will and engaged community and dedicated, committed people in the organization and in our system of justice is how we were able to do that. And so sixty-two percent reduction in crime, twenty-two percent over the last five and a half years. And then I think of what we're doing in the city-county collaborative, in the California City Gang Network, and we're really putting Ventura County on the map in terms of doing some really good problem solving. And that's what I really enjoy, is taking us out of that, just being law enforcers, to being those who contribute to building safe communities. And so it's a very bittersweet time to, as I pack my office and I'm going to have to go buy clothes now. It's a very strange feeling, but I would not trade the experience for anything in the world. So thank you very much for this recognition. Thanks.
I see your white suit, maybe you might want to take a photo with us. And every time I stand next to this guy, I feel like a little kid looking at size.
Well, Chief, I'd like to just, if I might, a few comments. Just thank you for your leadership. It really is leadership that instills in the men and women who work for you, that they have pride in the job they do, respect for you, and they give to the community that same pride and respect that then makes it a much safer community. It's been a pleasure working with you on all the intervention programs and that philosophy that you have at the core of everything you do. So it's, I honor you and respect and appreciate our working relationship and the good work you've done for all of us in the county.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Chief.
Let me just say, John, you are a towering example, not just physical stature, but seriously about character and the man who you are. I think it's been a tremendous example. I know myself, coming into this in the last four years, and people, you know, you get to go around and get to see who is one of these men that really have made a difference in a community, who's really somebody that is an example. And you talk about your leadership and all that. It's true. Your name comes up, and I'm just honored that I got the opportunity to work a little bit with you, know you, who you are, and, boy, Oxnard's going to miss you, but I have a feeling you're going to be around this county, and a lot of that leadership and those abilities are going to still be here. And so hopefully, we're going to, we're going to see you. But I'm just thankful. And I know the people of Oxnard are thankful, and the people of this county are a man who thinks outside the box and has shown true leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
I just want to say that it's hard to believe that you'll really retire, but I'll try to. And also, just how much respect the county has for you, and really, the numbers show too, and the way that you go about it and the community policing and working with the community has really, you know, been successful, and it's because of your leadership. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you.
Chief, I just want to say, on behalf of probably thousands of kids in Oxnard that were at risk, that could have gone one way or could have gone the other way, your leadership influenced lots of those kids to have programs and opportunities and chances in life, and many of them chose a different path as a result of that. And so I appreciate it, and my challenge to you is to not let us lose the talents that you have for the benefit of those, those kind of kids and young people that we've got to keep going in the right direction. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you.
And I'll say, behind every good woman, there's a good man. Good to see you here.
I know we see the sheriff and we elect, and we see the DA out there, and I know that those partnerships you're going to miss out here with Oxnard.
Well, no, I think we've pretty much, whoever gets my position, they'll be pretty well tuned up. I don't think anybody's going to come in and turn this ship. If they do, they won't last long. So thanks.
Mr. Nicole wanted to say something?
Chief, on behalf of the county, your leadership and the success you've had in Oxnard has also made you a tremendous partner in law enforcement here in the county. We also want to thank you for your patience in allowing your wife, Anita, to put in all the time that she does in assuring the success of our communications operations in the Sheriff Department. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anita, for being here. All right, thank you, Supervisor. Next, we have, oh, we've got a few minutes here. No, we're going to do one, we're going to, yeah, well, yeah, maybe we should take a break, except I know that that airport guy's sitting out there saying, come on, come on, come on.
I think he's still waiting on a hangar. He can wait a little longer.
Yeah, yeah. Item twenty-six. Come on down. Grab it while you can. You just have that one item. We'll take care of it and then take a quick break.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Want you to get back to work.
Supervisors and Mr. Nicole. Todd McNamee, Director of Airports. This is an item to adjust the budget to allow us to accomplish a roof replacement on a sorely needed roof that's past its useful life, one of our buildings in the Business Park at Camry Airport. If you remember, in June, we came forward with budget and rate adjustments. We were deferring some of these capital projects, and based on those actions we took back in June, we're able to bring this one back, and this accomplishes a roof replacement and some repairs on some neighboring roofs in that area.
And this is a priority on that list, too. So yes.
Motion, I think that's a much-needed two roof repairs, and I think we're doing quite a few repairs for the amount of money that, you know, and the Airport Authority passed this unanimously to.
Correct.
So there's a motion?
Yes.
You did? And a second to approve the recommended action?
I'd like to make a comment before we vote on that, which is that we had a question about whether to have a fee increased a little while ago at the airports, right? And of those of us that are now supportive of spending this money on the new roof, I'd be appreciative of the fact that there were those of us that were there to support the fee increase so that we have the revenue to be able to do that. Because you don't put the new roof on, you spend a whole lot more money later when you get, when you get all that storm damage and stuff.
Absolutely. And I'm also pleased to say, I'm sorry to interrupt.
There's a motion and a second?
He would have found a way to get it done without the fee, don't worry.
Take it, Todd.
Take it over three years instead of immediately.
Thank you.
And passes. All right.
Thank you very much for your support of the airport.
You're welcome. All right, we're going to take a two-minute break, and then we'll be right on time for our ten o'clock. Okay? Chair.[1460.25] Come back to the dais. We'll proceed with our items, and we have the first one up is Supervisor Bennett's.
Thank you very much. This is a... It's a pleasure for me to get into this room this morning, people that have been working very actively on this issue of homelessness in Ventura County, as we, the Board of Supervisors, declares Homeless Awareness Month in Ventura County. And I have a resolution that I would like to read, simply because I think it does a very good job of talking about this important issue. And then we have a presentation that I'd like to go into. So, whereas in America, a country filled with infinite promise, the continuing problem of homelessness is deeply disturbing, and safe, affordable, permanent housing is an essential component of strong families and communities. The number of homeless in Ventura County in 2010 is estimated at 1,815 homeless persons. The face of homelessness reflects all those who do not have a place to call home, including not only the stereotypical picture of the indigent single male, but families with children, youth aging out of foster care, young adults staying with one friend after another, those who, for the first time, are unemployed or underemployed, the uninsured working poor whose medical crisis pushed them over the edge, the elderly person who has lost the family home, those who are homeless due to divorce, domestic violence, or the loss of family connections, as well as many others. There is not only a human cost, but a financial cost to homelessness, and treating people who have already become homeless is far more expensive than preventing homelessness. Breaking the cycle of chronic poverty and homelessness requires new ideas and innovative action. The County of Ventura and each of the major municipalities has adopted the 10-year strategy to end homelessness in Ventura County. And private citizens, service providers, faith-based organizations, city and county employees, and elected officials have formed task forces in cities of Camarillo, Ojai, Oxnard, Santa Paula, Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, and Ventura. Appreciate Councilmember Andrews being here, part of the effort in Ventura, and are collaborating in ways that have greater impact than working independently. And while progress has been made in some areas of the 10-year strategy, the current economic downturn has resulted in thousands more Ventura County residents being at risk for homelessness, and is reflected in the 2,389 individuals who have come to the county homeless one-stop asking for assistance. Ending homelessness is critical to the vitality of families, businesses, and communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors proclaims November 2010 as Homeless Awareness Month in Ventura County. And be it further resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors thanks and commends all of the individuals and organizations dedicated to this effort, and encourages all Ventura County residents to take an active role as partners to end homelessness in our community. What I'd like to do right now is, just for a moment, call out some of these efforts that are going on, really exciting things going on in Ventura County to try to end homelessness. Individuals, organizations, governments, working together, new ways to end homelessness in our community. They're innovative, and here's some examples. When the cities of Camarillo, Simi, Thousand Oaks, and Ventura didn't receive a share of the Homeless Prevention Fund, if we remember that, all right, rapid rehousing funds from the state, the county stepped up and shared the county's allocation with those cities. I think it's just the beginning of this new approach that we have to this. Under the leadership of the Harbor Church, over 20 churches, including churches from Ventura, Camarillo, Moor Park, and Thousand Oaks, have teamed up to support the work of the Kingdom Center, Traditional Living Center, in Ventura, ably supported by Gail from Supervisor Long's staff, I might point out. The Ventura Homeless Prevention Fund, it's a program of the Ventura Social Services Task Force, one of those city task forces that have been set up, is a true collaborative partnership between the United Way of Ventura County, Catholic Charities, Project Understanding, Salvation Army, and Lift of Your Voice of the Unitarian Universalist Church. To date, the fund has made it possible for 155 Ventura households to avoid eviction or foreclosure and remain in their homes. That's 155 families that didn't start down the cycle of homelessness. And once you start, think of the children that are more likely to become homeless, et cetera. Remarkable effort, all with patching together bits of funding and an area where we constantly need more funds to come in. City of Ventura has developed a safe parking program in collaboration with Salvation Army and local churches to develop safe parking for homeless individuals who are living in their vehicle that allows them to sleep safely and get connected with a caseworker and social services to help them get back on their feet. Linda Brunsweiger is here with the Camarillo Workforce Housing Task Force, a group actively monitoring future housing projects with a focus on affordability. And Linda, could you put your hand up, please? Great, thank you. The task force has worked on the Camarillo housing element in SB2 language. They have supported efforts to keep at-risk people in housing, as well as supporting the development of the Housing Trust Fund. Over the past two years, the successful Simi Valley Alliance to House Homeless have collaborated to assist homeless individuals and maximize public and private resources to document, track, and successfully obtain and maintain housing for 156 homeless individuals or 76 households, many of which have families. Tracy Miller is here. Tracy, could you put your hand up, please? Thank you. Tracy Miller is here with the Caneo Valley Affordable Housing Workshop. They've created the Caneo Valley Homeless Prevention and Emergency Assistance Fund. This year, the fund has assisted 21 households that were at risk for homelessness, 50 people total. That group is also searching for a suitable site for a year-round emergency shelter. The Ojai Homeless Task Force, also known as Catch, provided two movie screenings paired with food drives to benefit help of Ojai's food pantry. The group is also working on an emergency warming program to extend the shelter season. And then, we certainly recognized before, but Kay Wilson-Bolton, and Kay, put your hand up for the few people that don't know who you are here, is here from the Santa Paula Task Force. She mentions that it only took a few doing good work to raise awareness and the levels of conversation about the issue of homelessness. Not everyone can do something, but everyone can be supportive and let others do the work without impediments. And we also have Will Reed from the Oxnard Commission on Homelessness is here. Most recently, the commission and the Society of St. Vincent-St. Paul collaborated on a fundraiser to raise $20,000 to support the Oxnard-Ventura Winter Warming Program. So, I think you could see, and could you put your hand up, please, there? Thank you very much, Will. You can see, just across this county, the 10-year planned end homelessness does have effort behind it, does have mobilization. It still has holes. It still has areas that we have to work on. But you have to commend all of these people, and there is a different approach going on. The process isn't always fast. It's not going to be easy to keep bringing this together, but at least we've broken down some of the barriers that we used to have there. Some of these groups are working together for the first time, trying to break down those barriers, and we're not in the mode that I believe we saw too much of 10 years ago, which is pointing fingers and blaming, and well, somebody else wasn't doing enough, and instead focusing on what each one of us could do to try to make it happen. And the openness is really great. In April, the Board of Supervisors approved our request. Supervisor Long and I brought a request for $2 million in matching funds for the year-round homeless shelter, and those funds are still available and certainly getting homeless shelters. But that's the one area in the 10-year planned homeless plan, we actually went down in services rather than up in services. So, we look forward to working with anybody that comes forward in terms of trying to make an effort there. So, there is much work to be done, but there is much work being done, and today is an opportunity for us to stop for a moment and celebrate that. And the next step in our program is I'd like to ask Supervisor Long to talk about our Housing Trust Fund.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. And this is a day for us to take a moment to really think of the work that is underway. We have come a long way, and to recognize this month. My few comments is really to give you an update on the Housing Trust Fund, and Linda Brunsweiger is here, and she is now the Executive Director for the Home Housing Opportunities Made Easier group that really came together a couple of years ago, three years ago, two, to say five, six? Oh, my, time flies. And I've been engaged with them through this, and to really look at what we need to have in the way of resources to give incentives and matching dollars to folks who are willing to build some affordable housing and low-income housing for homeless populations and others. And that's what home is all about, and we had a stumbling block. And first, we had a gift, and a gift was from the voters of this state who approved Proposition 1(c) in 2006, and that gift was to say, "We need to put some housing on the ground for folks." And then we had a little stumbling block, because one of the conditions under 1(c) was that you had to have at least $1 million in matching grants, and that was a stumbling block, to be able to see how you generate those kind of funds around a population that generally is not, perhaps is supported or recognized, and the need that's not supported or recognized. So, it was through, in August of this year, that Governor Schwarzenegger signed AB 1865 that really did lower that threshold for matching funds, and that's when the board also had taken action to put $500,000 on the table to leverage that, to be able to make us ready to apply for 1(c) funds for matching dollars for our county to be able to support and incentivize housing. So, that has been accomplished. That really is a significant piece, and the work now still in front of us is obviously now to make sure our application, we go after those funds, and Linda's targeting that along with the Home Executive Board of Directors and the supporters in the community, to go after acquiring some of those 1(c) funds, to really kick this into the next level of interest and participation to put some homes on the ground. So, very, very proud of the work that home has done, and Linda's going to really take that to another level. So, thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you for Supervisor Long, for that update on the Housing Trust Fund, and thanks for the good work on that. I'd like to introduce Linda Henderson, our Deputy Director of the Human Services Agency, and she's going to give a brief description of the county services and some introductions. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Nicole. My name is Linda Henderson. I'm going to speak briefly about one program that serves the homeless population, and I'm joined today by a team of social workers, managers, coordinators, and community-based organizations that are dedicated to this population, and as Kay pointed out, believe in the work. The Homeless Prevention Rapid Rehousing Program, known as HPRP, is part of the federal stimulus program designed for people who are homeless or facing imminent eviction. The intent of the program is to assist people who have the capacity to sustain long-term housing, but because of the difficult economic times, need temporary financial help, as well as social work, case management, and employment assistance through programs like the Workforce Investment as a bridge to housing stability. One year since its inception, the HPRP program has served 830 people countywide. This is 300 households totaling about $478,000, who without this program and other supporting services would be homeless today, living on the street or in their car. And now, it's a great pleasure that I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Richard Beck. He is joined today by his social worker, Elva Martin. Mr. Beck is a veteran and a client of the HPRP program, and is joining us today to tell you a little bit about his story and experience with the HPRP program. Richard?
Good morning, and welcome, Mr. Beck.
Good morning. Last year, my wife had passed away, and I lost my job, and I didn't know what I was going to do. I didn't know where I was going to go. And on TV, I seen a phone number. I called it up, and Elva Martin answered it, and I explained my situation to her. And ever since then, I've received good help. I'm in a WIA program now. I've gained certifications for security. Without the program, I don't know where I would be today. And it's just, from going through the experience, what I kind of noticed is it doesn't seem to be a lot of information about getting the right phone numbers for the right people to call. But once you start, you just got to keep going and keep trying till you can find the right people, because without the homeless people helping me, I don't know what I would have done. And I'm very grateful. They asked me to come today and talk to people, and I have no problem with that, because I'm very grateful. It's just really, I can't... I'm living proof of the program works. I've come a long way. I've got a long way to go, but my outlook is more positive than it was a year ago, and I'm just grateful. That's all I really could say.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I think that really highlights, it's one person at a time, and it's the compassion and professionalism of our service providers out there that make a real difference. Thank you for taking the time to come down. Really appreciate that. John Jones is the Chair of the Ventura Social Services Task Force, and John is going to talk about the activities, the Homeless Awareness Month activities that we have to celebrate Homeless Awareness Month this month of November. And John, thank you.
Morning, everyone.
I did not expect you to be so spiffy here.
On behalf of the task force, I'd like to thank the board for this proclamation. There are a number of events planned for November. These events both reflect this being Homeless Awareness Month, and also serve as a reminder that the issues impacted by poverty and homelessness are addressed best by the community. Community involvement is essential. If we simply restrict our response to what the government can do, to what the faith-based organizations can do, to what the nonprofits can do, will limit the impact we can have. It's with the collaboration, innovation, that these issues are best addressed. And in November, we have, next Sunday, November 7th, Many Mansions has their Bowl of Hope projects from 12:30 to 3:00, and more information is available at manymansions.org. Saturday, November 13th, Homeless Awareness Day activities include, from 9 till noon, the League of Women Voters Ventura County presents a free forum on homeless issues, myths, strategies, legislations at 5100 Adolpho Road in Camarillo. From 2:00 to 4:00 the same day in Ventura, we have a cardboard brigade, and anyone can come and show your support with community members on the streets of Ventura. The Sign Headquarters is at 5654 Ralston Street in Ventura. And then at 7 o'clock the same day, free film screenings, including Humble Beauty Skid Row Artist, a one-hour documentary featuring homeless and formerly homeless who create beautiful art. And that same evening is River Haven Part II. And even if you didn't happen to see the first River Haven, I would certainly encourage you to come and see that. That's also at 5654 Ralston. And on Thursday, November 25th, Thanksgiving Day, the city in Ventura, downtown Ventura, at the Knights of Columbus, the 30 Annual One-City, One-Meal Thanksgiving. More information on that is available at 648-4977, or at the Ventura Social Services Task Force website, which is vsftf.org. If anybody has additional activities they would like us to post on that, we certainly can, but it's absolutely essential to have as much community involvement as possible. Thank you.
John, thank you very much for identifying all the things that celebrate Homeless Awareness Month and raise awareness during this month of November, and it certainly is appropriate, as the holiday seasons are approaching, that November is Homeless Awareness Month, and that we become aware of that as we...
And that Thanksgiving meal that's going to take place in downtown Ventura for the third year, it's not so much a, you know, "Come feed the homeless," but "Come break bread with your neighbors." They may be homeless, they may not be.
Classic example of the new concept and the new approach. It's not "Come feed the homeless," it's "Come break bread with..."
Yes.
It's not come feed the homeless, it's come break bread with your fellow community members that are having challenges at this point in time. So, thank you very much. I'd like to encourage everybody to participate in some way, to do your share, to try to help address the issue of homelessness in Ventura County. Participate in one of the Task Force, one of these activities that are out there. I'd like to make a special pitch for the Homeless Prevention Fund. It seems to me as such a great investment of dollars. If you can keep somebody from becoming homeless, it's much more cost-effective than any other opportunity. I'd like to recognize, back in the back of the room, Cindy Cantle, who went to the Homeless Task Force meeting and ended up, came up with the idea of the Homeless Prevention Fund, and they said, that's a good idea, why don't you chair that committee? And suddenly, a staff member is now the Chair of that committee and doing a great job. So, I appreciate Cindy there. And so Kathy, I'd like to have you come up for us to officially present this resolution on behalf of homeless advocates here in Ventura County. And you look like you have something you'd like to say?
Of course, I always have something I want to say.
Good.
One of the things that the Homeless and Housing Coalition has been able to do, aided by all of the people in the audience and hundreds of other volunteers, is we've collected a lot of data since 2007. And you did talk about there were 1,800 homeless people on any given day in this county. That translates to about 7,000 over the course of a year. One of the things that was just published this year is, our consultant took some of our data and did a study on it. And what we know now is that 96% of the people who are homeless in our community are tied to this community. If anyone would like to review that paper, it's on our website. The other thing is, 12% of our homeless population are children, and 12% are veterans. 40% are disabled. 20% are working, and of the 20% who are working, half of those work more than one job. And a disturbing figure that came up in the study we did earlier this year was that 44% of the homeless population have suffered from some form of domestic violence, either at home or living on the street. So, we're going to do a little bit more exploration of that, thankfully, using the students at Cal State Channel Islands who assist us every year with our studies. So, there's a lot of data out there. We're learning more and more about this population, and of course, that helps us to know what we need to do to assist them. But it isn't possible except with all of the people who are sitting out here.
Kathy's done a remarkable job of trying to coordinate efforts countywide, and we really appreciate it Kathy. I see Bill Outter Finley from the Salvation Army, and we've recognized other people in the audience, so I wanted to make sure we do that. And Linda, would you just ask, could we ask, you said there were social service providers in there, could we ask them to stand, please, so that we could recognize those people from your.
Those A people and those our community partners.
There we go. Great. All right. And now, I'd like to come down and present this to Kathy, but I think this is an appropriate time for us to just to ask all the people that are working with homelessness, come forward so that we can take a picture here. All right, thank you very much.
And we have a 10:15 that has a tight timeline, so we will move to that. Right away. We'll move right away. Always good to see you Kay. All right, now I'd like to invite down District Attorney Greg Totten. We're going to jump to item 18 because of timeline the District Attorney has, and that I know we have our Congressman present. I apologize for the delay, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Mr. Nicole. The item that is before you this morning is to seek your authorization to accept a U.S. Department of Justice grant award for our DNA cold case program. It is the first such award really in the history of the nation. It is a very innovative, new program. As you may recall, many years ago, we created a countywide task force that included law enforcement and representatives of the District Attorney's Office. And the purpose of the task force was to identify cases from old, that across the county, from every jurisdiction in the county, that had physical evidence that could be typed for DNA and then run against the database. And we did create about, found about 32 cases, and those cases, some of them moved forward, but the small grant funds we received from an Institute for Justice were not enough to really advance the cases fully investigatively and from a prosecution standpoint. So, in 2005, really at the urging, and this is a statewide problem. Bottom line in homicide cases is you work the case that occurred 48 hours ago. And if you're a prosecutor, you work the case that has already been solved. It's really hard to find resources to go back and solve these old cases, even though DNA gives us the promise of doing so. So, in 2005, because so many of my District Attorney colleagues had the, experienced the same challenge, I was asked to approach Congressman Gallagher to see if he would carry legislation, precedent-setting legislation to, for the first time, authorize federal funding for prosecution and investigation of DNA cold cases. And prior to that time, the federal government had spent nearly a billion dollars on additional funding for DNA testing and additional funding for DNA databases, but money had never been authorized for investigation and prosecution. And so, thankfully, Congressman Gallagher carried the legislation. He proved to be a formidable champion of it, and it was ultimately incorporated into the 2006 Adam Walsh Child Protection Act. And as you know, an authorization is just the beginning of the process in Congress. To actually have money flowing to local government, you need an appropriation. So, the following year, again, at my request, Congressman Gallagher very graciously agreed to push an appropriation, and together, I think we met with a number of legislative leaders in Congress to advance an appropriation specifically for a pilot project. And the Ventura County Pilot Project is the first in the nation that will receive federal funds, $570,000, over a three-year cycle exclusively for the investigation and prosecution of DNA cold cases. And with that, I would like to ask United States Representative Elton Gallagher to come forward and speak about this and the process that lies ahead in Congress.
Thank you very much, Greg. Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Nicole, it's a pleasure to be here this morning, and I thank you for the opportunity to have the chance to discuss DNA cold case program with you. As I'm sure you know, my congressional colleagues approved funding for the program in fiscal year 2010, this year, under the Commerce, Justice, and Science Appropriations Bill at my request. It is a three-year pilot program, as Greg mentioned, based solely here in Ventura County. And if successful, clearly it will be expanded throughout the rest of the country. So, there's a lot on Greg's shoulders and your shoulders to make sure this works well, and I'm confident that that will happen. I can't emphasize enough how important this program is to get the violent felons off the street and bring justice to victims and their families. The federal government in California has spent considerable resources establishing DNA databases, as Greg mentioned, here in California. California alone had nearly 1.2 million felons in its DNA database when Congress approved this program. But if no one is comparing the information in the databases to the evidence collected at crime scenes, cold-blooded killers and rapists will continue to go free. Ventura County has well-trained and equipped law enforcement agencies and prosecutors, a no-nonsense judiciary that we can all be very proud of. They have earned a reputation for aggressive enforcement and tough sentencing. Ventura County is clearly, in my opinion, the perfect venue for this pilot program. District Attorney Greg Totten deserves a tremendous amount of credit, if not almost all the credit, for bringing this program to reality. He brought the problem to my attention, and we worked to move the pilot program through Congress together. Greg's ability to identify a problem and find solutions is one of the reasons Ventura County remains among the safest counties in the nation. And with your support and Greg's hard work, this will be a model that every one of us can be very proud of across the nation, and will grow to, I think, being, to solve problems not only here at home, but across our whole nation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here before you this morning.
Thank you. Thank you Congressman.
Let me comment. Elton, I appreciate you coming and with this with Greg.
I'm Congressman Gallagher.
Sir. Yes, sir. Very good.
I worked hard for this title.
You worked hard for that title.
Go ahead Peter.
But I think this is one of your first times here, is it?
Oh, I've been here before, but with a different hat on.
I know, but I mean, just, I guess the idea is, I'm just, I appreciate what you're doing, what you, hard work. I know how hard it is to get this kind of stuff through, and all the things you've done for this county. I just want to say thank you, because a lot of times, we don't say thanks enough. I know we have roads and all the other special projects, you've helped so much to make this county, and this one here.
We're all on the same side, and I just appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this morning, and I urge your strong support in helping us on many of these criminal justice issues, not just this one, but so many others. It's not just by accident that this county has a reputation for focusing on putting bad guys away, and the message is out to many people that if you're going to do a crime, you're better off trying it somewhere else. And we want to make sure that that message continues to resonate throughout this county, and hopefully, we'll catch on in other counties as well.
Good.
Thank you very much for the kind words.
Congressman Gallagher, I just want to say thank you also.
I'm Eldon Steve.
But there have just been many times you've stepped forward for Ventura County. This is a classic example, to have the District Attorney be able to contact you and get your cooperation on this really helps us here in Ventura County.
I appreciate the comments. Thank you all very much.
I do also want to say thank you, and not only for this, but also other fundings you have gotten us, for example, for the crime lab, and how that has made our county safer. And particularly when you're talking about the DNA cold cases, you know, that's a sure thing of convicting murderers, rapists, as you mentioned, and there should be a time when there will be no cold cases. All of those should be connected, and I thank you very much for our community, for our county.
Well, this is a huge start. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much too.
Board members, is there a motion?
Thank you.
There's a motion by Supervisor Foyes, second by Parks. Please vote on the recommended actions. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. All right, Board Members, thank you for, we have taken.
I'm going to have to make sure I use the correct titles now.
That's right, out of order. All right, now, that brings us, we'll go back now to item 17, which is also time certain. It's a report on our investments, and good morning, Mr. Hanson.
Good morning, members of the Board, Madam Chair, Mr. Nicole. Well, I really don't have, I have some good news. You know, September was a 1.38. I can let you know, I'll be back in a couple of weeks. October was a 1.22, and that sounds really good compared to what's out there in the market. But a quick little bit of arithmetic, at this point, the highest investment that I can buy is .60. So, it's kind of like adding more and more water to the soup. So, I'm letting you know, the yield's going to come down, there's not much we can do about it. But once again, yield is our third criteria, right after credit and marketability, and as long as I'm doing the investments, we'll stay this course and not end up like Orange County, because I do get some pretty funny phone calls with what I call creative investments, but I'm probably the king at saying no. As far as what rates will do in the future, well, if you look ahead on the probability tables, even if you go to September and November of next year, there's only a 15% chance in the futures market that the Fed will raise rates. So, rates are low and are going to stay low. Quick update on our office, the tax bills have gone out, the money's coming in, we've probably got $44 million by now. That's about 7.5% already, that's up $4 million from last year, probably because people are a little better off than they were from '08, '09, and '10, so we're getting the bills paid. The Acting Treasurer, Don Hanson, is doing a great job running it. He has a management style a little bit more like Hal Pittman, and he interacts as a team player with the auditor, the fourth floor, County Council, and ISD, has done a very good job. It's been a very good time, and whoever gets elected today, I think, is taking over an excellent operation.
Other questions?
Thank you for a good report.
And, oh, I bring my associate, Bertha Lopez, because if I'm ever not at my desk, she's available, and if this were a movie, Blind Side, I'm the quarterback, she's always behind me making sure that I, making sure that I have the right answers and the right information. So, thank you.
Supervisor Foyes?
Bob, I just want to say thanks for, during all this time, we could have gone out looking for money, and we would have been in real trouble with those high-interest rate returns. And I appreciate, I know it's not the best, I know those numbers used to be up in the three, four, fives, it was great. But I also got to call you the $5 billion man, because you're kind of oversight with this $2 billion, and you got an oversight of $3 billion over the Retirement Board, and I appreciate your consistent votes to maintain the integrity of that plan, to ensure that all the people that are on that, that are being paid now, and the ones that in the future will be paid. So, I appreciate those votes you do there too.
And the retirement subject is going to get more and more complicated, it's going to get more and more expensive, and it's going to get more and more important that the board appointees are the right appointees for the board, because I just see a real earnings factor, benefit factor. There are some people that are saying, we ought to go prospective with a 401K, 457, do away with defined benefit. But in the meantime, we have it. So, I'd like to thank all of you for your support, some of you attend the meetings sometimes, but I want to point out to you, it's becoming more and more evident with every meeting how complex retirement's getting. We only need to look at yesterday. Thank you very much.
I also want to thank you, Mr. Hanson, because we continue to get the high rating that AAA standard impors, you know, which is probably the highest rating that any agency can get for the safety of our, of our money there.
It's the highest, we're the highest, and I don't compare myself to the state, because it's like apples and pineapples, but I think they're at .45 on their yielding now. So, and they've got PhDs up there. Okay, anyway.
Okay, thank you for the report. The action before us, there's no other questions, there's an action for a, receiving foul on this, and motion is second to do that. And as always, thank you, Bob, and that passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to go to our 10:30 time certain, and that is to receive a report from our CEO's office on the state and county status of the budget, as much as we know from the state's fiasco. And I know we all received, well, I think we did.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. We expect, we have a, there's a couple of slight updates in the, on the information you already received, but we'll go through this presentation quickly and hopefully give your Board ample opportunity to ask questions and make comments in that regard. This is just an overview of the state's budget. You see there $86.3 billion from last year, it's $86.5 billion. They have a slight increase, but when you, of course, like our budget, you have increased costs. That means overall, they're going to have to decrease a lot of programs. That means overall they're going to have to decrease a lot of programs. So their overall budget in the general fund is actually up about $200 million, but when you have costs going up by significantly greater amounts than that, they had an $18 billion gap that they cut, 7.8 billion in spending reductions and $5.4 billion in enhanced federal funding, $3.3 billion in revenue increases and some other funding shifts. And it did leave a reserve of about $1.3 billion for this year.
Paul, are you sure the governor wanted you to expose that?
Well, we'll get to some good news. There's some good news in regard to the state, that they kicked the can right down the road again. It's really unusual for them to do that, but we expect.
Toe must be getting sore, you know?
One-time solutions of $8.9 billion. These are the numbers that we've developed. We think that, the one that concerns me frankly the most is the sale leaseback of state buildings. Realistically, what they're doing is they're relieving their budget for $1.2 billion this year and having 30 years of increased costs due to the fact that they're plugging a gap with, this is all one-time, all one-time special loans, Prop 98 suspension. And they're just frankly, they're not doing what they should be doing up the state. I guess the good news, I read this in an article in the Weird, News of the Weird, the state did pass a cuss-free week, so we got that going for us. They considered changing the state rock, so that's some good, and they made it illegal to use anything other than California cows in dairy ads. So they are producing some good quality work out there. On the other hand, maybe it's best that they concentrate on those types of things rather than trying to run local programs.
Yeah, leave us alone.
Exactly. The state budget local impacts, this is where we come into play from the state. Forget about the fact that the state has, forgetting about the fact that the state has about probably eight to $10 billion issue that they're going to have to address next fiscal year. These are the impacts from our local budget. Primarily, what we've seen is that we think that most of the state impacts have already been incorporated into our budget. We have a number of items. The Williamson Act, potentially $90,000 for us, there's a lot of issues that we have to work through that Williamson Act. We're getting a lot more information down from the state, how they plan on implementing this new aspect of the Williamson Act. Not a significant dollar amount for us to begin with. Initially, it was $300,000 under the old program. So 90,000, about a third of what we were getting before, but regardless, it's not a major revenue source for our county. The offender treatment program is being eliminated, about $415,000 budget for probation and behavioral health. The, it's a senior deputy probation officer and a reduction in behavioral health contract. We're working, again, we're working through all these processes. We may have some era funding available to keep this program going through a good portion of the remainder of this year, but clearly that will be ramping down unless the state wants to give this money again. So we'll be ramping down that program over the remainder of this year, so hopefully using that era funding to ramp it down. Juvenile parolees transferred from the state to the county, the state is going to pay a small stipend, is about $15,000 a year, where it costs us about $100,000 a year to incarcerate the juvenile parolees. So it's clearly not enough. The incremental cost is not $100,000 for each kid, but in general, when you add up the cost of our program over the number of kids that we're serving, it's around $100,000 a year. So incrementally, it won't be that much, but regardless, the stipend that they're sending down to our local level is nowhere near enough.
Do we have an idea how many kids are we talking about?
Not that many initially. I think it was in the, don't quote me on seven?
Seven.
Seven, thank you, Frank, seven, it was seven.
And what is the marginal or incremental cost?
Marginal.
Do we know what the incremental cost is?
We don't think it's going to be significant because of the fact that right now our staffing is adequate to absorb the seven additional. Matter of fact, that's another victory for local government is the fact that through probation and their interaction, they are keeping that number in the juvenile justice facility at a really low level and that's, it's lower than we anticipated, which is good news, but we do have excess capacity, which actually is good news from our overall AB 3632 mandate, that's been suspended. This is another issue our mental health, our behavioral health is working through. They have a contract with the schools. My understanding is that they are the only mental health agency that actually had a contract with any of the schools throughout the state. But that contract was with the schools and recognizing that this 3632, this mental ill help for the school-aged children is a school's responsibility, not a county's responsibility. So we're working with the schools as we speak to try to make sure that that program continues on. We think that we're in a pretty good position. It'll probably be a scaled-back program, but we still anticipate being able to serve those kids, which is, I guess, the ultimate goal.
Didn't I read that as Superintendent Jack O'Connell had some reserve funds that he's putting forward for this?
That's what, I read the same thing and that's what we're hoping, that some of that will help the schools in the contract with us. Also, the number of counties and schools are suing the state, are suing the governor relative to his line item veto of this program. Their argument is that he can't line item a mandate, so we're, you know, we'll work our way through that. We're not as concerned because we do have this contract with the schools. And schools recognize that it is their responsibility, so we're following up with them to make sure that the program is, continues on as best as possible, maybe not to the level it was, but clearly providing the services for the kids in need.
Do we fund that upfront and they reimburse us?
That, yes, the 36, under the 3632, that's a statement, it was a state mandate, so they would, we would provide the service and, under the state mandate, and they would send us the money about, what, three years later, Christine?
I was going to say it.
Somewhere in that range.
Ten years. So we're really.
Well, right now, they haven't sent us, they owe us about $25 million for past mandates, but some of the mandates that they're actually approving, they have been up to date on funding. It's the ones that they stopped funding three or four years ago that they owed us from prior years.
And, but we're still providing service for those?
No, those, a lot of those we've cut off completely, right. Let's see, the public health indemnization grant, about $525,000. We expect two positions. Public health can balance that within the, what they have already. We're expecting reductions in funding to the contractors. We're expecting reduction in funding to care providers and foster care, not a direct impact to the county government, but clearly to the county, the people providing the services within the county. Those last three items are not direct issues for the county government, but for people providing services, not specifically the county, providing services to those, to those people that need these services. That's in the CalWorks childcare and then, of course, the IHSS providers.
Those two positions are the county positions for the?
Those are county positions and public health has, has the ability within their structure to trade out, right? They're not going to be layoffs. My understanding is there will not be layoffs, but they will have to eliminate those positions eventually. And we'll be coming back mid-year, generally speaking, to clean up a lot of these issues as we go through the, through the rest of this year to determine what the actual impacts will be. Because like I said, we're still looking into a lot of the ramifications of these. Our budget, nothing has changed. This is just a recap for where we were at the beginning of the year. Other issues, these are our issues.
Go back a little bit.
Sure.
When you, I appreciate you giving this stuff so we have some understanding a little bit. Our overall budget's down about 1%, but our general fund appropriations, you're saying are up about 2.3%?
Yes.
Where are you getting that increase? If I can ask.
Well, 1.4 is from the general purpose revenues in general. The other is we spent some, a little over $3 million in designations. So we spent some fund balances particularly here. So that kicked in over the, we're actually spending more this fiscal year.
Spending more than we're taking in?
That's correct. By that little, I think it's 3.1 million, so. These are local issue we still see. The general fund contingency is 2 million. If you look at a $882 million budget, that's not a big dollar amount, but generally speaking, we haven't needed the contingency too significantly during the year. That's held pretty well for us throughout the year. Property tax CPI at risk, this, October is the month, month, year-to-year, they measure October as the CPI for the property tax. Last year, if you recall, it was a minus year-to-year CPI, so that applied to everybody's tax bill. It got a little, probably haven't, maybe if you've seen your tax bill, your actual tax bill is down a little bit this year. We don't know what it's going to be for this year. We expect to know toward the end of this month, probably around the 20th of November, what those actual CPI will be applied to our overall base Prop 13 tax, which is in, probably in the $100 billion range. So a 1% increase, 2%, we don't know. It maxes out at 2%, so that's the maximum amount on the CPI. But if it goes down again, our overall role will go down and our property tax income will go down.
What's the preliminary data show?
Preliminary data is probably around 1%. We don't know, we'll know that, like I said, toward the end of this year. So that's, that's the one we're thinking about, 1% up. That's the CPI year-to-year, but it's a statewide CPI. Southern California is a little bit, they combine southern and northern California. We get generally, we go by the LA metro area CPI and that's a little bit lower than the northern California CPI, so when they combine them, we'll know those numbers. The sales tax-related revenue remains down. That's our Prop 172 primarily. We're looking, well, being the ever optimist I am, we're still, the year-to-date, we only have two months so far because of the way the state does the accounting for the sales tax. But year-to-date, we're about even with last year. And last year, we were about five or six million under budget for that number. So what does that mean for this year? Probably, I would guess, best case scenario, two to $3 million under if it rebounds. If it rebounds and we continue upward, we're flat, like I said, from year-to-date, but it's two months. I'm going to say that we're going to have a better year than last year. You can quote me on that, but don't take it out on me if it doesn't come.
And you already, you already gave us that prediction.
Yes.
I was following it.
Following it closely. But again, that is a risk area for us. We budgeted fairly, well, quite a bit optimistically and we will continue to maintain that optimism going forward. We hear that there's going to be a good Christmas season. Well, that, that's good news. Other good news we've seen, that our share of the Prop 172 monies is ticking up a little bit proportionally to the state. There's two, there's two. One is statewide sales tax. As the statewide sales tax come in, it's allocated by county. Our proportional share looks like it'll be a little bit more than last year. Those first two months numbers are based on last year's proportional share. We won't know the new proportional share until sometime probably in January and then the state makes an adjustment. So we're hoping that number goes up a tick.
Is that a population change?
No, it's really based on prior year's sales tax, CITIS-based sales tax. And so they're behind basically a year when it comes to the proportional allocation. The $5 million attrition mitigation, we have that in our designations. And then retirement contribution increase, here's a shock for everybody. Our retirement is going to be going up over the next several years. Hopefully, this is, obviously being facetious, hopefully not a shock. The numbers going up over the years, we see the green line, which is estimated contribution dollars, and then the estimated contribution percent is the blue number. The continuous go up over, you see 2010, 11, our current fiscal year, the county's contribution is around $125, $130 million. We expect that number to go up to close to 100, we expect it to go up between 20 and $25 million next year, next budget year, 20 to 25. And the subsequent year, about the same, probably a little bit more than that. These numbers are based on a number of assumptions, obviously, but the key assumptions are that we had a 15% return last year in the retirement system. That's the good news. The bad news is we're still making up for the 20% loss from the prior year. Remember that 20% loss equates to a 28% overall loss because we assume we're going to be earning 8%. So when you earn minus 20, we're actually down 28% from what we assumed. 15% return, good news for everybody. Good news for our county budget, good news in the long term. The problem is, it's not, doesn't impact you right away, it does slightly impact your contributions for next year. That, if we would have made an 8% return as we assumed before, those lines would be a little steeper. So instead of 20 to 25 million, we'd probably be looking at 25 to $30 million increase for next year's. The other assumptions are, we're assuming that we're only going to have a 6% increase in the liabilities next year. We think that with the, you know, the counties working with the unions to get a decrease in their final compensation and the 3% contribution from the employees, that number may not be as high as it would be otherwise. Regularly, it's about 8%. We're assuming from the years on out, except for next year, at 8%. So we're assuming at this point, we will know the information in December, so we'll be adjusting these when we get the actual data from the actuary. That's the number we can't predict as well as, we can predict the, based on assumptions, we can predict the assets a lot easier than we can predict the liabilities. So the liabilities we'll know in December. We're assuming they're going to go up only 6% versus 8%, so that helps.
But this chart does reflect the 15%?
This chart reflects the 15% for this last fiscal year end and 8% going forward. So far, year-to-date, the retirement system has done quite well. I mean, if we could lock in right now, I think we would be in good shape going forward on that. It's in excess of the 8% already, so, but we have.
I think you're right. I think if we locked it now, we'd get like 12. But we also have to take, understand, we say 15, really it's only 7%.
That's correct.
It's only 7% above our, because we have to get 8.
Yep.
Also, looking at this, these numbers, this chart's starting to change a little bit from what we saw maybe a year ago, year and a half ago, in the sense that we're up to 300 million where we're headed. And it looks like it's leveled for the next 10. And we get, we're going to get 300 million, we're going to be there for 10 more years.
We will. And once we get to that level, then.
That's the big difference.
The charts comes here and it starts, what happens is that your salaries increase at such a level that the dollars don't change. What we'll see is that the percentage will start ticking down, but the dollars will continually go up until a certain point, then we start ramping back down after a 15-year amortization of the unfunded liability. Then the dollars actually start coming down. But it takes, it takes a while to work this big rat through the snake, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, you think about, if you think about, when you get up there in about 2014, over a six-year period of time of, we were at, what, 100 million, 120 million a couple of year or two ago?
That's correct. Well, we're, yeah, we're at 130 million right now.
But I mean, yeah, you think about that, we could, this can be an extra billion dollars over that period of time.
As far as contribution.
Say that contribution, yeah, it's unbelievable, yeah.
And I think that, that kind of leads into the final, our forecast for upcoming years. There's, again, a lot of assumptions involved in our forecast. I think the primary assumptions involved here are that the state and federal government will continue to pay their proportional share of program costs. What we've seen in this year is that the, the state, the federals, we can expect that they'll continue to pay their share. The state is our question mark. Now, the state, in this budget year, most of the programs that are federal and state-funded, they're continuing to fund. So our assumption, it may be a little optimistic, but it is an assumption. The other assumption is there's no salary increases for employees here, zero. Zero across the board, the entire five-year period, no salary increases. If we add 1% county-wide, it's another million and a half to $2 million. So if you increase salaries during this time period, we can expect that, that gap to get wider. The other, the property tax increases, we're assuming for next year, at this time, 1.5% increase for next fiscal year. We'll know again, next, basically next June 30th, we'll know what, but we need to start planning and we'll get more information and we'll work with the assessor as we go through this process, but right now, we're assuming it's a 1.5%.
For next?
For next year. That's assuming the 1% CPI that we just discussed and another half percent from just general valuation increases.
What are you assuming for the other years?
We're assuming 3.5% for the second year and 5.5% for the out years. 5.5% has been historical average over the last couple of years. That number's come down a little bit, but it's, it was actually above 5.5, so we brought it back down. So it's 5.5% in the out years. And that's why you don't see as big a gap in the out years as you may otherwise see. So that may be an aggressive assumption at this point, but we're going 1.5 for this January 1, 2011, 3.5 for January 1, 2012, and then 5.5 starting 13, 14, 15. So that's, that's the assumptions we base this on. Those numbers go down, the gap gets wider. I think that's why you're, like I said, that's why you're not. I think that's why you're, like I said, that's why you're not seeing huge gaps in the out-years is because every nickel that we have in new revenue has been going toward paying the retirement cost increase. Because this number does not...
Paul, this is not unique to Ventura County. This is all agencies probably across.
I think, actually, I think Ventura County is probably in a lot better shape than most agencies.
Yeah, but you know, I think the public should know that too, you know, that we're in a lot better shape than other agencies.
In a way, I'm a little bit careful to show a chart like this because it looks reasonably good, I mean, compared to what, you know, the overall is. But there's a lot of assumptions in here that are, that may be at the far end. The far end meaning zero raises for anybody, 5.5% raise, you know, property tax increase.
And it's important that people understand that, because when you say no raises for five years, you know, we're maintaining at least their jobs and we're not, you know, doing other things that other agencies are doing.
That's correct.
Due to corrector budgets.
Paul, you're being real, I believe, real generous with that. I mean, expecting 5% because you're asking to come up $200 million in annual revenues in four or five years, right?
That's, well, a lot of that is not just property tax. Obviously, the majority of our revenue is state and federal program, state and federal funding, and charges for services. The property tax aspect's about a third.
I understand that, but I guess we're, I think a lot of people have the assumption that the economy turns around, all this gets fixed, right? I remember this, we recall the governor because of the $10 billion budget deficit during the boom times.
How'd that work?
Yeah, you know, so I mean, so we were in dire straits no matter what. This, I mean, I think our, we were in a situation that Tom Alter's talking about, that, you know, everybody sits here, talks about, from Washington, oh, you guys just got to get your economy turned around. You guys were so out of balance before the economy took a dump. It's going to be a major problem. And now, we borrowed billions and billions on top of that. I'm just, get a little concerned that we get too optimistic and we don't, because if it does get wide and we're not making the right choices early, it makes it much more drastic later.
I agree, and you need to make the decision. For example, if you cut $7 million in the next fiscal year, that 19 comes down to 12, in essence, and then the 21 comes down to, the more you cut at the beginning, the less issue you have in the out-years. I think the 5.5, we're looking at it as being a reasonable number because what we've seen historically from an assessed valuation standpoint is that when we have down years, we've never had an actual negative year, but when we've had less than, let's say, 3% increases in the past, we've seen those numbers come back fairly quickly. So, we see like a minus 1.5 to 2% increase, and the next year it goes up, and the following year it goes up fairly sharp. But we're trying to be realistic without being dire and without being overly optimistic. But I think there's, you know, some optimism to this, but not overly. I think if we wanted to be pessimistic across the board, we could show a huge gap, but I think that it, what we generally try to do is be as realistic as we can and supportable with some of the assumptions.
And I appreciate that because we don't make it look like it's the end of the world. But if you were, if that was a 2% or 3%, I'd probably be a little bit more comfortable with it. Let's see.
A couple of things I want to point out. Number one, we've had a history of doing this long-range projecting, and it's, I think it's had its, it's had a very healthy effect on us because it's caused us to make good long-range decisions, and that's why we've stayed, we've adjusted these lines as we move forward, and that's what we have to do. So, I think that we've been fairly realistic in those assumptions as we move forward. But it's always sobering for us to get those, with these exact same things. If you remember that chart, and it showed that gap growing with us all through the 2000s, and what we kept doing is making the hard decisions to make it work, right? And that's what we have to do. Like you talked about, if we close the $7 million gap, then the rest of those all come down to $12 million and $15 million, et cetera. And that's certainly what we're going to have to do. I think the other thing for us to get on the radar screen is, we have to start this conversation, and we talked about it a little bit, but the salary increase is going to be the increased pickup that we're making for pensions. And we have to recognize, that's a salary increase to employees when we are making greater and greater contributions into the pension. So, I think the language of no salary increase is not the accurate way for us to say this. So, it's a no salary increase because we're going to be making an increased contribution to somebody's pension program.
Total compensation.
That's right. We should be, we should constantly be saying, this is a total compensation increase in here, right? Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on Supervisor Bennett, as far as the board's preparation in the five, six years ago, as we looked ahead, and your board's preparation in making hard decisions, you know, it's very good for us as we go forward in this downturn. If we wouldn't have had this huge downturn in the economy, our county would be in an exceptional position going forward. Right now, we're in relatively, relative to a lot of other government units, in decent shape, but we're still in a negative position if we, you know, but that's, remember, we had the huge, largest recession since, you know, the 20s. So, that's me, a testament to your board's early decisions because we would be in huge financial position, huge issues we would be looking at now relative.
And Paul, that's why it's so important to convey that to the public, you know, that compared to other agencies, you know, because of the conservative budgeting and so forth that we've accomplished this. Yeah, I think that does merit getting said, and that is, we suffered the greatest recession since the Great Depression in '29, and we had a balanced budget last year. Almost nobody else did in terms of the cuts that they had to make, et cetera, and they're facing, you know, real crisis. And we have to, we have to continue to pay attention, but we're certainly in much, much better shape than those.
I think that's good, and all the years, early years have made that, and I think you're right, we do have to do it. And we've got a 20-plus million dollar hit that's going to come. It's like I say, I pay $1 for gas or $4 for gas, we're not getting anything different. I mean, it's total compensation, but it's going to hit this county, and it's going to be very difficult, and a lot of tough choices have to be made.
That is the, you know, the wrap-up of my presentation this morning. If there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Are there other questions?
It's good that we start early and often on this. Thank you.
I'd like to see you come as often as possible. I mean, you make, you do a very good presentation, and you make it easy to understand, but I appreciate you always looking at the numbers and from the CEO's office and everybody up there because the people out there, the public, expects us not to be in positions like the other counties, do the right thing. So, I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Paul.
And I agree, the more, and I think it helps us to continue to be the watchdog on how well we're doing is to get these periodic updates. Obviously, there's more yet to roll out from the state, and there'll be more analysis done. And one of the policies this board has held strong with is if we get reductions from the state on specific programs and/or grants, we take those same reductions here in those same program areas at the local level. So, we're...
And to follow up on that, your department managers have done an excellent job of implementing that and adjusting without, we haven't seen significant layoffs either, so they've done it within their staffing level, preparing ahead. I think that's the key issue, is department managers have prepared ahead for the inevitable issues relative to state and state funding and local funding too.
Prepare some more.
Thank you.
And that's a great comment because this is a team approach. They're having to take hard looks, knowing, and knowing that their costs are going to continue, how do I provide a service at a reduced cost is, and I appreciate, at some point, some things may have to go, and I hope they're looking at the future of what is important. But I do appreciate them, what they've done. Thank you for that comment.
You really realize too, the elephant in the room is the pensions, and a lot of that was done a long time ago, and we realize decisions that are being made now reflect well into the future when it comes to pensions. So, I just think the board's going down the right path in trying to address that.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Revert, any action? Receive a file, receive a file on that report. Motion is second to do just that. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. So, that completes our 10 o'clock hour time certain items. We finished item 26. We'll go to item 27, which is behavioral health.
Good morning, Chairman Long, members of the board, and Mr. Nicole, Melanie Roy from the Behavioral Health Department. Item 27, request your approval for the First Amendment with our IDEA Engineering Contract for Mental Health Services Act, Prevention and Early Intervention, Social Marketing, and Other Media. This particular contract, what our intention is, is that we've already implemented some prevention early intervention programs, Triple P Parenting that we're collaborating with the schools on, anti-stigma program, suicide prevention, other PE and I programs. We have an early intervention program for individuals who are showing signs of early psychosis. And as part of those evidence-based practices, they have a universal prevention strategy approach. And so, IDEA Engineering is going to be working with us to implement that universal strategy. And what that means is, what we're attempting to do is to intervene on a broad scale in schools. For instance, on the anti-bullying campaign, we've had some pretty tragic events, even here locally in the county. There's been some national media on bullying recently that you're probably aware of. And what we're going to be doing is working with the schools to help the schools create environments that are really intolerant of bullying and support the schools in those efforts. So, what prevention really is intended to do, and we've been very successful certainly on our alcohol and drug side with our place of last drinks and all the work we've done there, is to try to intervene on a broad scale to mitigate some of the influences that really cause people to end up in higher levels of care, to end up in residential placements, to end up in the inpatient units, et cetera. So, the hope is that these investments will pay off certainly over time. The other issue is that the prevention early intervention dollars this year, we've got about $4 million to spend this year. Next year, we have about $7 million to spend. The $7 million next year is going to dip in the following year, so we're not going to be able to spend this money on ongoing programs. We need to do some one-time expenditures such as this. If we don't spend this money, and I've been up here saying this before, I'll just repeat it, the money reverts back to the state. It doesn't go into the state general fund, it goes into an MHSA fund, and it gets redistributed to the county. So, in effect, if we don't spend it locally, it goes back into the state general MHSA fund, and will basically go to LA County because of the allocation methodology. So, I would really encourage your support for this IDEA Engineering Contract. I'm probably going to be back again later to do more of this. So, this won't be the only IDEA Engineering project in terms of, again, a very broad prevention intervention, universal strategy.
Questions, Supervisor?
There's no place else you can spend this money. And this whole thing, you said, I hope this does, I hope, you know, I mean, that's a lot. We're spending a third of a million dollars in a hope.
Right.
I mean, it sounds like there's some real bullying issue, all those things, I understand that. But is there other proven things that we need money for that we can spend, or is that whole thing has to be something brand-new again?
The way the regulations are written for prevention or intervention, we have to engage in universal strategies. We need to do media, we need to do intervention at a broad scale and a universal level. It's part of what we have to do. And what we're trying to do is to target this money in areas where we know that there's a need and where we really do believe that there is going to be an impact. You know, a child in residential placement costs us $50,000 to $60,000 a year. We prevent one of those, that's money well-spent, not only from a fiscal perspective, but from a, just a treatment perspective.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, one person in the inpatient unit is very expensive. So, what we do on the prevention end to prevent that does save money.
Right. Now, is this a brand-new program we made up, or is this a proven program that we're adopting someplace else, or we're just trying, what's...
No, these are, a lot of what we're doing in this is we've implemented some evidence-based prevention strategies. So, these are programs that have been utilized elsewhere for which there's data that says that these programs have, do create an impact, their intended impact. Like the EDIP program, is an early intervention program for people who have early signs of psychosis. It's, again, because it's evidence-based, it has data to support its efficacy. And so, the hope, again, with that is that we know that if we intervene early and we teach schools and we teach people who run into people who have the prodromal signs of schizophrenia, and we intervene early, we may actually prevent the onset of the disease at a level that would impact that person's life for the rest of their life and create situations where, you know, they're incarcerated, they're in hospitals, they're, so, I mean, you know, there's tremendous cost-saving potential.
Right. Let me ask this, if we don't use this money, and you say it goes back and ends up in LA, LA's under the same mandate to use it the same way?
Yeah, yes. San Diego County just started a, a few weeks back, I read in the paper, a huge anti-stigma campaign, and it's the same funding. You know, and again, it doesn't go back to the state general fund to be utilized elsewhere. It goes back, and then it gets reallocated by the same allocation methodology that they use to distribute the funds, and of course, LA gets most of that. So, to not spend it locally, I think, would be a disservice.
Other questions? Motion? Motion is second. All good questions, and that's all right. Please vote, please vote, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. It is good work, and, thank you. It is our philosophy, yes.
And item 28 is also my item. This requests your approval for the authorization for a fiscal year 10-11 contract amendment to Telecare's contract with us. And this was all in preparation for the creation of our short-term social rehab program that we are going to be doing at the VCMC campus. What we did was, we have emptied CASA A, and we've readied that for the individuals from Hillmont House to be moved over to CASA A. And then, we are changing CASA C, which was historically just for transitional-aged youth, and that is now going to be for both transitional-aged youth and for adults. And what this caused was the need to do contract amendments with Telecare to facilitate these changes and the impacts that it had on the funding for those programs. I don't know if you've got any other questions.
I don't have a question.
So, we've got sufficient appropriation of the number.
I don't have a question, I just want to point out that, you know, this was something that we decided to do in terms of modifications of the program in Ventura and going there. I think this has been handled very well. It seems like it's moving smoothly in terms of the client providers and the community acceptance, et cetera. So, my compliments to you. Thank you.
Any questions on the item? Okay, before the board?
Who's the recommended action?
Motion is second. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 29, this is a human resource, and we have Yolanda Walker and Lisa Yoshimura. Thank you and good morning.
Good morning, Chair Long, Mr. Nicole, and distinguished members of the board. We are representing the CEO's Human Resources Office, and we're here to represent Agenda item 29, and we are requesting the amendment to the salary range for the public health nurse 1 and 2, and deletion of the obsolete classifications. Any questions?
Are there questions on this? No questions. We have a motion is second to approve the recommended action, and we'll go ahead and Okay, we'll move ahead on that, and we have four affirmative votes, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 30 is a MOA with the IOU engineers, and Tavion's going to present that. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Nicole, Tavion Cosio for the County Executive Office. The item you have before you is a request to commence public hearing on the adoption of the Memorandum of Agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 501. If you recall, we commenced negotiations to discuss successor agreement in April of this year, and we did reach agreement on a comprehensive contract on October 20th this past month. This was for a 15-month term expiring November 8th of 2011. Some of the provisions that I'll highlight include no pay or benefit increases during the term of this agreement. IOU represented members did agree to pay 3% more into the retirement plan, and for new hires, to pay 4% more into their retirement plan. This would be effective November 14th of this month. This is in line with what was agreed to or implemented with other... This is in line with what was agreed to or implemented with other general membership employees with previous negotiations. In addition, we do have an agreement to establish a labor management committee that will meet once quarterly for the term of this agreement so between now and November of 2011. We've also modified slightly the language as to how employee work schedule changes are done at the agency departmental level. We also have some minor cleanup language related to voucher shoe system, the flex credit allowance cleanup language, but no actual changes to the benefit levels. Again, we reached agreement on October 20th. The IOE membership will be holding the vote on the 4th of November, so this coming Tuesday, sorry, it's coming Thursday, and they are expected to ratify the agreement. If that is the case, we'll then place this item on your November 9th agenda for second reading and final adoption by your board. That concludes my comments. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to...
And this is for 15 months, right?
15 months, yes. It goes from August of this year to November of next.
Any questions?
No questions, just want to point out, I know Mr. Nicole pointed out yesterday, but just benefit here with reverting the record is that normally we won't print this, a contract of this length into the, and print it up for the agenda, is right? Thanks.
And eventually we'll all be on the iPad, so we won't have the books to begin with and they can put all they want on there.
There's a motion and a second? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good work. All right, board members, item 31 is mine and it's to appoint Ms. Julia Medina to the Piru Local Recreation Advisory Commission. Outstanding, already outstanding active community member, very supportive of our, of our youth in Piru and my recommendation is to support the appointment. My motion. And there's a second. And please vote. Okay, and that passes unanimously. No. Item 32 is being presented to the board. There was a request from the governor's office and that the South Central Coast Region appoint a supervisor to, or recommend a supervisor for nomination to the governor to serve on the California Coastal Commission. And as my letter is quite detailed, I won't go over all of it, other than to say that there also is a city appointment that will be made and that's handled by the City Selection Committee and they will be meeting this Friday to hold their meeting and, and put forward a recommendation. I'm bringing forward for your consideration, San Luis Obispo County Supervisor Bruce Gibson. And as you can see from both the letter and the attachments, he is, has, is very qualified in both, I think, his, his role as supervisor, the similar philosophy of, of, that in this county in San Luis Obispo to look at that quality of life that includes balance and includes support for protecting our coastal region, keeping it the resource, tremendous resource that it is, both for recreational and economic and environmental reasons. Mr. Gibson has served in a variety of roles in San, in San Luis Obispo, but also at the state level. I've, I've worked with him at CSAC, I've worked with him in the Coastal Counties Caucus that was formed. He was one of the leaders that said, we need to sit down with the Coastal Commission and try to get an understanding of what it is that they want for us to be able to move ahead on our local coastal plans and, and what, you know, what, can we have a better relationship with the Coastal Commission and understand both their mission and our responsibilities? And Bruce was very, very strong and advocate in that, in that work. And so I personally know him. I, I received a request, I know that it's on the agenda today for San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara. Both of those counties are not putting forward any other name than, than Mr. Gibson, from the supervisor's position anyway. So it's before us, that is my, it is my recommended action, but there is certainly opportunity for other nominations or interest. Yes.
Thank you. I, I would like to put my own name into that. I think talking to Lynn Krieger, she would like to have some representation here and Santa Barbara also today is putting my name in as that too. They are going to put it on their board at the end of today. It's what I've, is what I heard yesterday. So I'd like to add my name to this list and no reason to take Mr. Gibson's off that list, but to add that if possible, along with this.
Okay. So that's Supervisor Foy's request. The letter from the governor says at least one and at least one, so I, I don't see, well, no, I, I won't editorialize any further on that. It's really for the board's consideration. I know in the past we have had, you know, a variety of interest out of this county, but it is a, it is a job that is going to be very, always is challenging with the Coastal Commission, but important to us as a county, so...
I could make that motion that we, you just would add my name to this list and go along with Mr. Gibson's also.
And I'm going to respectfully not vote in favor of Supervisor Foy's request to be considered on the Coastal Commission because while the Coastal Commission sometimes may go a little bit far in their zeal to protect access in the coast, I think that first and foremost, its purpose is to protect those resources and I'm more inclined to go for people who have environmental leanings and I don't think that is where your strong suit is, so I'll vote against the motion. Respectfully.
Is there a second on the motion?
Guess we don't see it.
Not seeing a second.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that fails for lack of a second. So then I'll put forward again the original request and the letter I submitted and that is to put forward Supervisor Bruce Gibson from this coastal region. That's my motion. Please vote. That passes four, four one. Okay. All right. Item 33 is a receiving file action on correspondence. Motion and second, receiving file. And that passes. Now, we have, we have, that passes unanimously. Now, board members, we are going to go into closed session. Will there be an announcement from closed session?
There, there may be an announcement.
There may be an announcement. So that's where that stands at this moment. So we'll go back in the closed session.